I'm sorry I wasn't here Wednesday, but I understand Roxanne did an excellent job taking my place, so thank you ma'am for moving it along. Uh, since I don't know you're tired of hearing this, but since I don't really have a lot in the budget, staying in the budget or our vote, I do feel like I want to make one comment starting off. I think like I need kind of, I really need to say something to party employees at Morgan's Point. We have a very loyal and dedicated staff and a very knowledgeable staff of employees across all departments.
Against all departments. And some of these, some of these folks have been here years and have acquired numerous skills and/or certifications that a lot of our surrounding cities would love to get their hands on. So what I'm going to ask is if we don't nickel and dime some things, if it's a matter of just a little bit of money, let's don't jeopardize what we have already established to these employees and maybe show them some appreciation. So thank y'all for being here and I'm gonna turn it over to Dalton and let it, let it run.
This is on y'all. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I got a couple of notes and stuff on here, but at the end of the day, I'm not really sure what y'all want, where y'all want to go, and so I'm gonna kind of kick it off to y'all and I'll answer questions on stuff that y'all want.
Dalton, Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in while everybody's sifting through papers. So Roxanne and I were talking briefly when we got in here. And I don't know about you guys, but it's been a pretty hectic week as far as citizen contact, for lack of a better term. I've been getting beat up and I use that term affectionately because I like it actually, I'm into that sort of thing. Lot of contact with our citizens and I've got a couple of points that I just kind of want to throw out. These are a lot of our citizens' observations and they're hoping to maybe kind of steer us in the right direction. So if you'll bear with me, first is, I got no less than about five different messages from people who are watching wherever, wherever our camera is, and I am just as guilty as everybody else, so please speak into the microphone because they said they could see us talking but could not hear us. So if you, I guess if you can't hear yourself, they can't hear you or us. I'll try to do better. Uh, okay, bear with me. So, um, first one's talking about the budget. I got a ton of, ton of comments and questions from people just about the budget in general. Basically the process, how it works. I know we're all learning, so are a lot of our citizens. So I think it's incumbent upon us to just kind of keep that in the back of our minds. One of the biggest comments I got was, why does the council, in reference all of us, why are we coming in with our own agendas? So food for thought. I'm ju, I'm just a messenger. For the budget. So I'm the messenger, kind of keep that in mind. The quote that I wrote down here was, "The budget discussion seems to be filled with personal agendas and opinions rather than consideration of the good of all of Morgan's Point Resort." So it'd be different if the city was on the edge of bankruptcy, but we're not. The previous councils worked tirelessly to put us in a great position and it appears you guys are taking steps backwards.
Did they give an example or anything?
No, these are all just generalizations.
Okay.
Uh, second point, and I'll try to be brief. The appearance is that we've all but alienated ourselves from the staff already. Uh, I think the mayor kind of touched on it. So, um, the citizens that I've talked to are talking specifically about the fact that when our staff brings us things already, we're just rejecting them. We seem to be the council of rejection or the council of inactivity. So, um, I don't know. Again, food for thought.
Now, part of the alienation from staff, um...
Talking to the microphone.
Part of the alienation from staff is at Dalton's request. He's asking, he's asked that we do not contact any staff, that we go through Dalton on everything. So we probably should talk about that as a group, because if our residents are having heartburn over that, maybe we need to look at Dalton, access to directors or, I mean, I believe in the hierarchy and I respect it, but...
I don't think...
Oh, totally. Okay.
Well, I think what the, what the citizens were saying, and again, I can dig up all this information later, but, um, let me find my notes here. Oh, is that we as a council appear to address our cit, or our staff just as numbers, that we look at a piece of paper and we really don't consider our staff, what they do, how they do, the hours they work, et cetera, et cetera. We just kind of look down at a piece of paper. The compensation study was brought up several times, and why are we comparing ourselves to other cities that are not us? And then the, the fact that the compensation study was done by the same company that did Belton's. But we don't want to look at that part. One of the biggest comments that I heard a lot was that, no, I, I think they're saying that we don't look at the difference. One of the biggest things that I heard was that we're looking at data that seems to, to suit us as a collective, not the city. So I, I think we need to relook at that.
Did that one again?
That we're looking at the data, kind of pulling data that suits us and, and what the five of us think, rather than the data that actually is kind of indicative of Morgan's Point.
Do you have an example of, do you have an example of that?
I don't, I don't. I was just trying to make notes because I didn't want to be here all night.
Sure.
Uh, I do want to, as a collective, when we get back to it, I do personally want to readdress Chief's letter and that position again. I think we can do a little more discussion on that. Uh, and we can talk about it later, more in depth as it comes up. I just think we have to remember that we're here as the voice of the people and the voice of our staff. So we're their advocates, we have to speak for them. That's kind of what I was hearing most.
Okay. I just, without specific examples, it's really difficult for me to process that, because I do believe that we accepted almost everything in the budget, the new positions that were offered, you know, so far, we looked over salaries and we're going to talk about that tonight. The only thing I see we didn't accept was a new position in the police department. And one of my citizens, my husband, said, "You put in a new position, it's like buying a new car every year and you're, you're committing to that." And so it's, to me, salaries are the biggest deal that we have to deal with, or not deal with, but to make good decisions on, because in the end, that's what we're gonna, we're committing to every year. I don't want to hire someone this year and the next year say, "Oh, it's not in the budget, let them go." I don't think that's taking care of staff. So that was my thought on it.
You want to get into it?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I got a couple of things that I can kind of point out, maybe try to dive into some specifics. Trying to take some notes and trying to process this. I want to try to dive back into the memo a little bit and summarize some of the, the key points in all this, because I think that we've dove so far down in the weeds, we've lost sight of what the intent of a budget is for, you know, for our residents and for the community, community.
Which memo?
Uh, the, the executive summary, the budget memo, sorry, the budget memo. So I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible because I definitely don't want to be here until midnight. So I, along with staff, with the team, presented a $6.9 million balanced budget. We presented a flat tax rate of 58 cents, which was flat compared to last year, even though that brings in an additional $320,000 in revenue or a 13.74% increase. The capex from year over year, we added another $239,000 to the capex from last year, from about $394,000 to whatever that is, plus $239,000. To include that, so out of the 320, if you added all the health insurance, you added everything that we added on to, obviously the, the amount of changes just generalized across the entire total combined budget has been well over $320,000. However, I want to point out that in this current year, and these were some of the conservative things that we've brought along with staff, the current year that we're in right now, we have 30 time full-time employees. We requested on a very conservative budget to realign, to abolish and to add some new staff. Um, I put our teams through the wringer, or I should say our department heads through the wringer during the budget. And with all the requests and everything that we're asking for, we are still coming out on top at 35 flat employees. As we bring up things from City of Belton and from other cities, let me back up real quick. By going down the current recommendations of council, we would actually be decreasing positions from 35 down to 34 employees. One of the common themes that I've kind of heard over the past, you know, couple of weeks has been our staff is overworked. So are they overworked or are they not overworked? That's a question that y'all have to ask. Y'all are the ones saying it, so you, so y'all obviously know something that I don't, which, don't get me wrong, they work extremely hard, but I think there's a balance to this all. Along with the directors and the conservative budget, we would not have asked for a realistic budget. I would have asked for the wish list if I would have known that we would have started nickel and diming $5,000, $10,000, $20,000 here and there. $10,000.0001-ish percent of the overall budget. This shouldn't be a negotiation. I've heard a couple of people say this is a negotiation. I even commented that this is a negotiation. This feels like a negotiation and it shouldn't. Our staff should not be negotiated for, our residents should not be negotiated for, and the bottom line is, is, is to the, you know, to the point of what we're presenting, we have increased revenues, we have increased expenses, but you know what? I've also seen a positive increase in both community support, community engagement, and just overall, just community over the past two and a half years where we're less than 90 days into this. A couple of points that I wanted to bring up was City of Belton. Since we've talked about City of Belton, we've also gotten an email recently on the City of Belton. They're asking for 14, 14 new people with an 11.9% increase. Most of those are in public safety. They also have an office manager position in that, in that role, or some version of it. Temple ISD, when we talk about salaries, since this is going to be a big topic of discussion this evening. Temple ISD started in 2018 with basically a 4% increase, and then in 2019 HB3 during that legislation, 86 legislation, basically put a mandate, so a state level mandate for teacher salaries, that increased salaries from four to 10% with an average 9% increase to teacher salaries. 2020, 2.7%, 2021, 2%. So from 18, from 2018-19, it was a 14.5% increase in salaries. 3% in '22 and then 3% this year. And my numbers or my dates may be off just because of the calendar versus fiscal year. Reason why I want to bring some of this stuff up is as we go into positions, as we start looking at things, we have a pay scale, we have certain things, and everything that we presented to council over the past couple of weeks, you know, regarding staff, is not wish list. It's a realistic approach to whatever service delivery model and customer service that we want. It's a proactive approach versus a reactive approach. Yes, the increase has been substantial from 1819, 1920, 2021, when we did the compensation study, that was the same LGC company that City of Belton used and City of Deer Park used, you know, so we did our due diligence to make sure that there was some relevant information, and we also pulled some relevant data from the surrounding area, basically less than a year apart. So with all that, there's absolutely going to be a substantial increase from '21 to '22. When you do a comp study and you don't focus on employees and you nickel and dime each position based off of what we feel is relevant job position titles and everything else, that's exactly what you're going to do, is you're going to end up in the exact same boat where the next time city council decides to do a compensation study, you're going to end up with another quarter-plus million dollar raise to play catch-up, because we're focusing on what we think is their job duties and descriptions versus letting the city manager do what they need to do. I'm trying to keep this at a very high level. This is the only thing I really want to bring up at salaries. I feel that diving into these positions should not be necessarily done at the public level, even though it is public information, but these, these are our teams. These are the people who support and do everything in our city. And when we look at the numbers, if we want to look at data points across the city, let's look at ours. And the bottom line is, is our data points have increased. Our general fund, or our fund balances increased over a million dollars over the past two and a half years. Our community center that was losing $15,000 a year is now, we're going to say, breaking even, because we're actually able to reinvest in it. We've gone from even including the residential and non-residential season passes to, to add, add, we're going to say revenue, but ultimately to provide better services and a better functionality to our, our pool. We're able to realign the pool that hadn't been realigned in 20 years. So all of these things, as we start nickel and diming every little piece of it, are we always going to get it perfect? Absolutely not. So the question that I'll leave in this, regardless of the direction that city council wants to go down tonight, if $10,000 is what's going to make or break the future of this city, then we have bigger problems to deal with than a $6.9 million budget in providing services and amenities to our community. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, you know, each one of these might be $10,000, but you know, pretty soon you're at $100,000. And so I think for me, it's not nickel and diming. To me, it is like, what is absolutely necessary to run our city? And I think we definitely need to talk payroll, because that's our 76% of our tax dollars. But I think it's less about the individuals. I've heard everyone in this room say how our staff is outstanding. And so I don't think anyone is saying that our staff is not outstanding. Are they overworked? Dalton, that's up to you. I mean, you, we give you some priorities, but you establish the day workload. We're not involved in the daily workload.
It, it seems though that everything we talk about over the past two weeks has been, y'all know what's best for staff. I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
No, Dalton, we asked you about the insurance and you said the switch.
And then, and then we went down, and then we went down to...
And then we did a $116,000 hit to the city for the employees.
Correct. And then, and then, and then when it came down to it, because that was a very tough decision and, and that was great, but then we focused for what, an hour on $30,000?
Uh, no. We focused on whether or not the city wanted to fund, for the first time, employee-dependent coverage. That's a strategic...
For a year.
For one year.
For one year.
That is a decision.
Yeah, for one year.
But it's a decision, it's not a no-brainer.
Uh, no, I, I didn't say, I didn't...
I think it needed discussion from council, because we all needed to make sure, if we go down this road, you're going to submit a memo that tells all the employees, this is one time only, and I think that gave us some comfort to the $30,000. But let me just add a big picture thing here. I hope you didn't come into this budget process thinking that we were going to start six days ago, go through the budget as all five new council people, and rubber stamp it. No, we're not going to do that. I don't want to make you guys defensive over it, but we have to be able to ask the questions.
I don't think that is, but when I'm getting dozens, multiple dozens of emails on evacuation routes and things that are so into the weeds versus having conversations with each of you, whether it's as council or not, we're driving around doing roads on a, you know, road studies, which again, we're going to present on a $50,000 budget. We had a little bit of time to go through this process. We did.
Okay, well, maybe we should get on with it and just try to all not be defensive and all try to take it in.
It's not about being defensive.
And we'll make joint decisions. I don't think any one of us, you know, wants to go in and override, you know, certain things on the budget. It's group decisions that we will make and...
I think it's very disingenuous of you to say we're nickel and diming.
Right.
We're asking questions. If that's disingenuous, if that's nickel and diming, then so be it. But we have, we're coming in with the idea that by law, we have to agree with the budget. Just because of putting it out there doesn't mean that as a council, we should just say, "Okay, that's great." I think you're wrong about our attitude. We are very much in support of the, the employees. We've said that innumerable times. If you think that asking a question about dependent healthcare is a, is a $30,000 is nickel and diming, we're also concerned about the, one of the biggest problems that people have, and I don't care if you're a salaried employee, a hourly employee or a multi-billionaire, is healthcare. It's eating everybody alive. If we can do that to help them, that is a great deal. But as anything, we want to know a little bit more about it.
No, absolutely.
And so to say that we're nickel and diming and going into the weeds, okay, maybe from your point of view, but from our point of view, at least from Pat's point of view, I want to know what the facts are.
No, you're absolutely right. And I mean, the first conversation you and I've had about the budget has been in public. I haven't seen you in 90 days. So yeah, absolutely. I'm trying to get all the information out there, much as...
Dalton, Dalton, can you please quit bullying us? I'm tired of you bullying me. You are just, I don't know why you have this attitude. It's beyond me.
I knew that he was going to walk out today.
No, this is, this is crazy.
Well, we need to get on with it and maybe Carrie.
Is it a public meeting? Are we allowed to speak? Are we allowed to speak? Or is it a public meeting or citizens' private speech? Go ahead. Yeah, um, we're here, but I just, I just read everything Dalton said. I, I believe that we're on an unsustainable path, unsustainable path. We have gone through all...
Stand in front of the mic. Stand in front of the mic if you're going to speak.
And this isn't personal. This is not about Dalton. This isn't, it's about the city.
Hello, my name is Mark Allen. I live at 48 South Cliffwood Circle. I'd like to address the city manager's comments, his opening comments from earlier. I disagree entirely with him. I believe that our city, right now, financially is on an unsustainable path. Since our city manager took over, we've gone from 26 full-time employees to 35. Our salaries have exploded, far beyond our revenue growth. If we continue at this pa, all in reliance on a salary survey that we haven't seen. I've been in business for almost 50 years. I've seen at least a dozen salary surveys. I've never seen one that was commissioned by management that didn't say they were underpaid. Every single salary survey you come up with says we're supposed to get more money. I'd also like to address just percentage increases. First of all, Dalton talked about teacher salary increases. Teachers in this state are woefully underpaid. They didn't get the money they deserved, and to compare their percentage increases with city staff is erroneous. And I wanted to address percentage increases. Our city manager has received a 50% increase in salary. Dennis, 50%. Now, you can say he was underpaid when he came in, but he negotiated his salary, didn't he? He, he got an offer, he negotiated his salary? And what's the very definition of market? The fact that we negotiated and agreed to terms. Two years later, you say you're 50% underpaid. I don't buy it. Again, this city is on an unsustainable course financially. And to be bullied by this city manager, I think is unconscionable. I think the fact that our, our, our financial house is a disaster. When was the last time we had bank accounts reconciled? Do you know, Steven?
I don't know.
Uh, May of 2019. Thank you, and I'm done.
Getting it done now. Yeah.
Carrier is consistent, city manager, I guess will take it over. Y'all, y'all tell me what you want to do, but if I, if you want me to refute his comments, I will. But I mean, hold on, let me finish. This whole bullying stuff, it just blows my mind. No one's trying to do this. What we're trying to do as a team in uncharted waters is trying to figure out the best path forward. So I don't need residents coming up here quoting misleading stats about certain things. So it hap...
Okay, please, you don't have the floor. Please.
Let's have a discussion after the fact, Mark.
Yeah, let's do it.
Or I could say a really nasty comment.
Uh, uh, you don't, please, we don't, you don't have the floor, let's get this resolved.
Let's do it from a high level. I think he said uncharted growth or...
Unsustainable.
Unsustainable, okay. Well, then how the hell did we present a balanced budget? It's just that simple. I mean, again, we can focus on the, on the minutia and all this stuff, but this budget wouldn't have come before you, prior, you know, directors, department heads, whatever you want to call them. It wouldn't have gone through me to get to Dalton, to get to y'all, without some sort of oversight. So the fact, and again, I, I'm actually in a unique spot because I came here after the mess. Dalton was the one who attracted me here, and I really like this team. And we are at a breaking point, whether y'all see it or not. This is a bad spot. So we can keep going down, but just the high-level facts is, we wouldn't be able to spend a million dollars this year on roads if we didn't have a good path or plan forward. So I can use scare tactics and I can say, "City of Belton is taking our sales tax dollars," or anything like this, which I know that wasn't brought up here tonight, but there's always misleading facts. I can give you any facts in here and I can make them really misleading. I'm trying to give you an honest perspective of what I think going forward, and that's what's ahead of you. So however we want to proceed tonight, that's up to y'all. But all these other things, and we're not going to know until another couple of months, but at the end of the day, an audit doesn't tell you exactly where you're at, it tells you where you've been. So hopefully when we get through these next couple of months, we will never go back to where we were. But that's kind of on y'all. And, and I will admit, it goes both ways. Staff doesn't trust council, and I don't think council trusts staff completely. So this is the first...
We have to heal that.
Yeah, I know. And this is the time to do it. So if we want to take a recess or whatever and figure out what we want to see...
I would like to see you just stay in that position and we'll continue to talk the budget and try and get it done tonight.
Oh, okay, yes.
Give me like a five-minute recess, because I want to talk to Dalton.
Okay. Okay, so I did a quick handout. Oh, go ahead.
Or I, I guess we're in uncharted territory.
I would say that we motioned to postpone for a moment.
A moment.
Take a break.
Five-minute break, till Carrie comes back in.
Do we want to agree on approach? Or do we just want to break?
I think we probably, again, I don't know the legality, because obviously we don't have a lawyer to talk to right now, but like, I would assume that we would probably just pause, because I would think, again, I, seems, seems that would be proper.
That sounds good.
Maybe say a little, you know...
Yes, for all of us.
Maybe we should pray over all the meetings.
Yeah, that's right. That's why they start them with prayers. Well, we got a lot of healing to do, kids. We're adjourned, so hopefully we're off the record.
There's only ever off...
Oh, okay. Well, I make a motion that we postpone until either Dalton gets back here, Carrie gets back here, or we decide to go forward.
I second it. A favor. A favor.
Back on, Esther. Make a motion to get back into session.
Second.
Aye. So I just tried to summarize what I thought, decisions we had already made, so we went and go back in and revisit decisions we had made. So that's, the first thing's compensation. And so under that, I would say, what decisions have we already made, and we want to give Carrie guidance? You want a copy of this? Yeah, that's fine. I made it. Let's just, let's put these to bed, if you want to. And then we can get into, I don't know if Carrie's prepared with that 22 base salary on the confidential list of employees.
Not yet, but I do actually have the percentages. So I will get the other one.
Oh, it's a new one.
Do we want to take a look at the decisions we made and make sure-
Yes, please.
-we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody else want to take the lead on this?
You're doing good. Just press on.
Go, Dorothy.
Okay, so we decided that we would fund the dependent care premium coverage for $29,000, and the employee pays the remainder of the 12% or whatever that is the employee dependent coverage. And Dalton will issue a letter saying it's one-time funding, and it will never be done again. We said yes to Lyric telemedicine. At the same time, we said yes to switching to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Carrie gave me some new numbers today. The breakdown is really $85,000 for the switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's 29 for the dependent, and then the three for the Lyric. So guess what, Carrie? You said 113?
Yes.
Roughly, for that healthcare decision, that whole group-
The original number, we said 116, I think.
Right.
Is what we were told, when we approved it, right? Which is more than what it actually is. So that's us saying yes to something, correct?
Yeah, so really, in the budget, if you go to page 24, basically, and I understand certain councils don't like to see budget to budget, but again, let's just, let's operate right now under the assumption that we stuck to last year's budget, for the most part. So if you just say, "This is what we were paying per employee," obviously, we're not paying for an employee that were a position that wasn't filled. So on this one, obviously, we were down, like, two police officers for two to three months, or whatever the time period was, whether they hired in February. So when you look at budget versus actual, you know, the actual's going to be down versus the budget, but we had it budgeted for a 12-month period. So to this point, we had $113,000 increase to the budget from last year to this year, which includes the $29,300.
I agree, that's what we did.
Okay. And then we said yes to the fire specialist as of 1-1. That's when you had it in the budget?
Correct.
And these are in the budget. Carrie has budgeted for those, so this isn't in addition to the budget.
Can we go back to that just for one second? Because I did have a conversation with Taryn, and you know, ultimately, because we had gone back and forth with 10-1 or 1-1, and honestly, he said, "If you could do 8-4, I'd be ready to post the position." So there's a need, like, that needs to be addressed ASAP. And so honestly, I would like to get that changed to 10-1, get that processed, because he said it's about a five-week process. He may even said two-month process, actually, to actually orchestrate all that out. Now, I could be wrong when I said that two months, so don't quote me on that, but it was a lot longer process than I had thought, because I thought, "Oh, two weeks, and you'll have somebody," but it's not like that. It could actually probably reflect to that, Jimbo.
Yeah, it does take a while, for sure, because there's, there are several steps in the process.
Because if we did it on June, on January 1st, then we're still into March before we actually get to hire that employee, and so, you know-
What would that add?
You know, it's about $17,500 if we funded for the entire year. So basically, what I put in there was a full-year salary, and then I have a negative proration for the three months. So if I just do the math real quick, don't hold me to the penny, which I know some people will. Just joking. No, but so, $17,500. So in that process, though, I think if he knew it was hiring, to your point, it's still going to take a couple of months, but once y'all approve this budget, whenever that period is, approve a budget in some fashion, I think he's going to start looking. So at some point, it's not going to be that if we approve it at 1-1, it's not going to, he's not going to fill it until March or April. My guess is, if he knows, he's going to try to hire it, you know, for 1-1.
He'll have it ready by 1, he'll be ready to hire 1-1, okay.
Right, but what his words were, I would, I mean, it sounded like there was an urgency. Am I wrong, Jimbo? I mean, you're pretty privy to a lot of that information. Am I wrong there?
Yeah, I think it's one of those things, honestly, and I don't mean to speak for the chief, but I think it's one of those things that, you know, if we told him he could start today, you know, bring somebody on board today, of course. I mean, it's common sense, you're going to jump at it. Okay, gotcha.
Would he bring somebody on board today, or start looking for someone?
Would we start looking?
Yeah, it would be looking. There are already, I mean, honestly, there are people that are, I don't want to say in the queue, yeah, in the queue, not in the queue, but in the queue. There are people with their tickets outside the queue.
So I have one question for you, then, Carrie. Is there a reason why you said 1-1 instead of 10-1? I mean, is there, is there a reason that we shouldn't be moving forward with this?
Yeah, to get a balanced budget. So in all these questions and stuff like that, the budget that you see before you was my best guess to get everyone what they asked, because again, these aren't frivolous requests or anything like that, and I'm not trying to say that y'all think it is, but this was my concession with department heads to give council and this city a balanced budget in a timely fashion. That would also allow us, hopefully, that the audits would have been done. If you wanted to prove the office manager, the same thing, give us a couple more months, but at least have that placeholder in there for both positions, because both positions, in my opinion, are needed.
Okay. So-
If I can, what I'd like to do, because obviously valid points on both sides, and not postpone it, let's revisit that one right at the end, because there's good, there's goodness, obviously, in both bringing them on and right now, and bringing them on later. So I think with a lot of the notes that Dorothy has on here, you know, based on how we look at some stuff, it may be a moot point, maybe I'll look at it and go, "Oh, yeah. You know, we got rid of the whatever." So if we can, I think it just-
Carrie, you want to capture that, that it's a question of 10-1 or 1-1?
Yeah.
It's a $17,000 increase to the budget.
And loop background at the end. I don't want to leave that one hanging past today. Well, I think we need to make a decision, yes or no.
Yes. I think we said yes on the senior accountant position for immediate posting.
We did.
Okay.
It's in your packet.
And that's in the budget.
Yeah. And it's in your packet for tomorrow.
Oh, right. Oh, we can't vote, but-
No, I know, yeah.
It's just budget discussions.
Yep.
We're leaving it in the budget. And we did say no on the office manager, and we got Matt on, or Jimbo got Matt on the phone, and we talked to Matt at the last meeting, and then Matt sent a letter to each of us, and the question is, do we want to revisit that decision based on Matt's letter?
I'd like to toss a couple of things out, just a little bit of research that, you know, because just trying to get a better idea of what we're looking at down there. I know, kind of defer to me, because I hang out down there quite a bit, but honestly, it's, it's on the good side of the hallway. So just a couple, and this is stuff that, just kind of reaching out to folks, I'm like, "Hey, just get some examples," because I don't necessarily think we need to compare everything, but I think it's important to kind of look at. Everybody knows that the biggest part of our budget is safety center, first responders, I think. Is that a fair statement? Pretty close. A large chunk of it, we'll call it that, and rightfully so.
Dollar-wise, it's probably admin.
Okay. Yeah, the thing that kept coming back to me after listening to Matt talk, and then the letter that came out, was just talking about the fact that, you know, pulling PD off the streets. So Lorena has 10 sworn personnel. They got a fire chief, they got two sergeants supervisors, they got an SRO supervisor, three SROs, a patrol supervisor, four patrol officers. They have a full-time civilian to handle property, all of their clerical and all their other tasks. They have a part-time person who does the Texas best practices, which we have not implemented yet. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that's our goal for both-
Okay.
-and PD.
That's Lorena, yeah.
How big is Lorena?
That's a good question. They're comparable.
The last I looked in 2021 census was like 1,700 population, so smaller than us.
It's smaller than us? Wow.
Now, one thing-
And they're all 35. They've got-
Yeah, and that's the one, that's the one thing I would definitely point out. When we look at these numbers, it's important not just to look at the numbers, and that's kind of what I said earlier, and Dorothy, you're absolutely right. I mean, you got to look at the location, how much land do they cover? You know, are they out in the boonies where our guys generally are not, unless they're providing, you know, assistance? I heard Gus was out in Belton playing the other day, doing something, so. But again, these are just numbers. Granite Shoals, located on the lake, roughly same population of us. They've got a chief, a captain, two sergeants, seven patrol officers. Nolanville, since they're close to us.
But no admin in Nolanville?
They have an admin, yeah. Nolanville has a chief, a lieutenant, a sergeant, a corporal, and an investigator, along with all their other officers, and they also had that administrative position. So I guess what I go back to, from my foxhole, is, this is kind of what we're looking at, is, I agree 100%, you know, money adds up. The money's in the budget, in the balanced budget. Our chief of police, who I have no intent of pretending to know anything about what goes on down there, has come to us and said, "This is a position I need to fill." So I just want to reconsider it, because obviously, he thinks it's important, so that's-
The issue comes with, sorry, can you hear me?
clarify who you are.
Todd Hodge, patrol sergeant. So before Chief Shutsi took range, or took reins, we had sergeant, lieutenant, lieutenant, sergeant, and we all split. Not really me, because I was patrol sergeant, so my main function is supposed to be on the streets, making sure the officers don't get hurt, get us sued, get the city sued, get someone else sued. When Klein left, we felt the need at the time, due to growth and business, to pull, try to get into the officer's street, and that wasn't going to work unless we pulled from admin. So me and chief had a conversation at the time, and not bad-mouthing the past chief, we were pretty much doing all the work that we thought we were going to be doing. Once Shutsi took over, there was no longer a lieutenant, so it was me and him splitting duties. Then we realized that the police department wasn't doing everything required of it, and that brought on more admin stuff, plus investigations. And our cases this year has exploded, requiring more investigations, more time. I'm coming in off my days off for calling a lot more than I was the past four years as sergeant. What I want to stress, like I said, I respect any decision y'all make. Y'all are in a tough decision. Y'all have a job to do, and I understand that. So whatever decision y'all just make, there's no ill will for me. But Shutsi has the only position in the city that if certain things don't get done by state and federal law, he can go to jail. And it's not fair to him to put all that burden on him and not either have, number one, an admin person that can be trained in racial profiling, audits, evidence audits, records, and just have me and him doing it. If y'all don't want to do the records, I mean, the office manager, that's understandable. But then this thing needs to really look at either adding back the lieutenant spot or adding a second sergeant, so.
I think that, I'm definitely more open to that, and I know it will cost the city incrementally more money, but I think what we get with that is blended service, and I think it's a great way to learn the police department, and you already have the skills as a policeman, and so I am all over that one, if that's a possible solution rather than an admin position.
Sergeant Hodge, would it be more money that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely be more money.
But again, I can't speak for what Chief Shutsi wants. I just want to, what's my opinion, because I work with him every day, and I just want to make sure that we're, I want to make sure that y'all are getting the full story before-
Well, I think when we left at last, when last we were here, it was kind of like, okay, let's take a breather on that one, and put it aside for a little bit and come back at it. I don't think we said yes or no. The impression I got when we left was, okay, it's different than what some of us were perceiving, so let's go have a cup of coffee and think about it, come back and talk about it later. That's where I thought we left.
Okay, then let's talk about it.
So I made, I reached out to some law enforcement people that I know, and Matt, I appreciate your letter, by the way. It was very persuasive. And it was interesting, because the officer that, he's retired now, that I talked to, is very familiar with Morgan's Point, is very familiar with the workload of a city our size, and he's a little more crass than I am, and I don't want to be super crass. So he was pretty much adamantly against the office manager position, and he's in law enforcement, he did probably close to 30 years in law enforcement, very familiar with our area. He did like the idea of either promoting within and creating another position that way, which is ironic, because I hadn't even addressed that to anybody, other than the talk that we had the other day. Matt, I hear you loud and clear, and I think I said that on the phone, man, and like, we, every, every one of us supports our law enforcement, like, and we support our city workers, so like, that little shenanigans that went down, it offends me, honestly, truly. And the fact of the matter is, like, man, we're all doing the best we can. We want to provide the best services for our citizens, and I don't know if our last city council spent half as much time learning, and again, I don't know, I'm just saying, I know that everybody in this, on these tables is working their tail off for nothing, because we believe in this city, and we believe in the employees, and like, so I don't know what the solution is for Matt's situation. Another one that I thought of was, because I have gone to the city, and it's been locked up, why can't we have a receptionist that we pay 15 bucks an hour, or 12 bucks an hour, that literally is sitting in that front entrance way? Like, there are ways to resolve that, I think.
You know, we used to have one person up front at City Hall, and now we have two. So one thought I had was sharing resources, and if the police department, yeah, because it's usually locked, if the police department, if we can reallocate from City Hall one of the admin people, then they can still do City Hall work at City Hall, but then they can be there to answer the phone. So just realigning resources.
This is probably going to not get us much places, because again, our city staff and councils aren't aligning, and we have a lot of room to cover. So I mean, right now, I would just think, put it as a placeholder. And again, if we can have a council retreat where we can dive into positions and staffing and stuff like this, because I mean, I can throw out huge stats and numbers and stuff like that, but this isn't the time and the place. I mean, we have to start making progress with this budget.
Right. So I would, if we have to make progress, I would say no on the top of that.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we take a straw poll and just see who's where? Just in, you know, and-
I'm a no.
Okay, I'm a yes.
I'm a to take it out of the budget, right.
I'm a no for now.
Right.
I'm a no for now. Yep.
Okay.
But, and I will just throw this-
And that's not a reflection on, on, we think it's a dumb idea.
No, you will keep saying it, though.
But no one is going to force my hand to do something- But, but no one is going to force my hand to do something, Carrie, and that's basically what you just did, so.
Yeah. So, um, we know you have a need, and, um-
We will work to fill that.
And we will work to-
I don't think I tried to force anyone's hand, and again, I apologize if I did, but I mean, typically, that's not my MO, so if it came across the wrong way, but here, to our point where it's five fifty and we've gotten just a little bit into that, so I want to make sure we're just-
And it's been a long couple of days.
Yeah, no, no, like I said, so.
Can we just continue?
Yes, that's-
Okay, so that's going to be taken out of the budget for now, and we'll revisit it six months from now as a, if we need to, budget adjustment, um, during the budget period. So we said yes on eliminating the grant position and the city manager's executive assistant positions, and then I had two questions on salaries, and the first one was the water lead operator has a pretty big increase, Carrie today, and the biggest reason for that increase is he was promoted to a lead. So he is like right behind Jesse, um, in the water department. So that answers that question for me. And then the only other question I have on the salaries, well, we need to get the twenty-two base, we can take a minute and look at it if we want to, but on the city secretary. And, um, the city secretary's position for our city is not a full-time position. Oh, do we want to look at this first?
Yeah, look at this.
Okay.
I think it addresses it.
Not necessarily the city secretary, it just, it, this is more reflective, or it's going to help y'all on the two steps for basically directors, below directors and directors and above.
I'm not quite sure what this is telling me.
I might, I, I didn't expect Dennis to take a copy, so, Dennis, will you give, Dennis?
Dennis?
Do you hand that over to Pat?
Y'all ought to ask what the, basically, two-step was as a percentage of their overall salary. So if you look at the far ride, that's the only column that I added, because I'd, I'd actually had that in prior to giving y'all off, because again, I don't, I don't want to overwhelm you with numbers and data points and stuff like this, so I'm trying to give you the data points to me that's going to help you do your job as a governing body in the easiest, most efficient manner. So, I had that one already in there, I have the other ones, I just need to sit with someone else to do the twenty-two base salary. But again, I said this to numerous people, um, that, that number is meaningless to me, but again, if it's something y'all really think is helpful-
What I was envisioning, and maybe I just didn't communicate very well, um, I was envisioning this sheet of paper, right here, that has, that you handed out at the, I think the first budget workshop, that has every employee and, um, the twenty-three base compared to the twenty-four budget, and I wanted the twenty-two base-
No, I, I-
Right on this sheet of paper, all of one sheet.
I understand what you're asking for.
For dollars.
I understand what you're asking for, I just, I think it's completely meaningless, and so-
Well, I'm asking for it.
I know, like I said, but I mean, again, as I, you know, as we had a conversation today, and then I was, I had a couple other ones, you know, that's just not, I didn't have enough time to do it today.
Okay, that's fair.
I, I will get it for y'all, but-
I mean, does anybody else, would anybody else like to see that?
I think historical data going back, you know, even if we went back five years, like, I think it's good you learn from, from history, in my opinion.
Because we've had significant increases, it would be good to know, you know, right.
I guess that, that part of the problem for some of us, since we haven't been steeped in this for the last two to five years, when you have a large increase, and you're playing catch-up, or you're ahead of it, or, you know, a little bit of data to help us make a logical decision is what we're asking.
Right, and so that's why-
Just because, you know, just because we're curious.
So, I mean, I'll, I'll use my salary, I mean, it, it's, it's fine, uh, and I won't go into the dollars, but if you look at the third column, the proposed salary as percent of midpoint, it's basically showing that my salary is eighty-four point six-three percent of the midpoint, which midpoint on a twenty-step plan would be step ten. So roughly, I'm at like step four, which, again, so that's where if you use that in context, our goal is to get most of the people up to anywhere from ninety percent to a hundred percent of midpoint.
Totally understand that, so, and this goes back to that study, right? The, the compensation study, so, without, because we've seen the PowerPoint presentation, but without actually seeing that study, how, how do I know that, like, do I think that that midpoint's right? If I look at cities our size, like, I mean, studies are very biased, like, or they can be biased, I won't say they're all biased.
Well, my question is, and, and this kind of goes back to, you know, do we need it? Do you want to see it? Um, I'm an overly simplistic guy, I don't care. I don't care.
Fair enough.
What I'm looking at is the proposed salaries percentage of a midpoint, where our people are, and then what kind of percentage are we looking at? Run down plan your desire to have that, please don't take it that way. Um, but, you know, for me, when I'm presented with something, man, I just got to trust that, that what's coming to us is the correct information. Um, I'm not saying that we don't do our due diligence, and then whenever there's something that comes up that just looks a little wonky, you're like, eh, wait a minute. But, um, this is one of those things where I, I think we're, we may be diving too far into right away, I mean, right out the gate, I know this is your world, um, but, I mean, we can sit here and pick this apart and be here another five days on, on how much a fire specialist makes on holiday pay.
I don't want to do that. I think we're staying big picture.
Yeah, I mean, for me, the big thing is, where are our people as far as percent of midpoint? What kind of raise is that going to give them, if any, this year? And where do we go? And the last thing I want to say is, so just so I understand that, and you guys correct me, Mr. Mayor, Carrie, we had a huge jump last year to try to move our folks forward, right? Is that a fair statement? And again, you guys know me by now with audits and everything, I don't care what happened, I really don't. All I want to know is, are we taking care of our people? Are we moving them forward? We moved them forward last year, previous city council, not on us, thank them for what they did. So now the opportunity for us is to continue to move them a little bit closer to that midpoint. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it, so.
Yeah, and I think we agreed to that last time, because Carrie showed us the numbers of the increases going to two steps, and that's probably a decision I didn't put up there, but, um, you know, we decided it was in the three to four percent range, even going two steps, and so overall, that's reasonable, and we moved on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the other point that should be made is it's not just talking about salaries, because you're also doing the health care and the optional, or-
Dependent care.
The dependent care, I mean, that's a total compensation thing, and that's a big deal. And to, to just kind of not make sure that everybody understands that that's something that the city is doing, not because we're legislated to do it, but because we want to take care of our people, and that's a, that's a huge thing. It really is. You know, you get whacked with some hospital bills that aren't covered by somebody with big pockets, you're screwed. And I think a couple of us can talk about that.
So I don't think we need to talk individual salaries, except for the, the salary on the city secretary, because it was compared to, like, a city secretary of Felton, city secretary of other cities, and ours is not comparable. We are a part-time city secretary position, and they also do payroll, and this is since, I mean, this is probably for the last fifteen years. Like, Ophelia was here, she was promoted from within, then Althea came in, she was promoted from within, then we brought Ophelia back, and then, um, we're again promoting from within, which is the right thing to do. But to bring somebody up to a thirty-eight percent increase in one year, um, because it's based on a compensation study that is not looking, that's looking at a job description, it's not looking at the actual functionality of the position, and we've never paid that much for a city secretary, except for Ophelia, because of the compensation study. I wasn't involved then, had I looked at the compensation study at that time, I would have still had the same questions about a blended compensation, because it's part-time city secretary, part-time payroll clerk, part-time administrative assistant. So what I did is I used their compensation study, our compensation study, and I did a blended salary, and I came up with, I think the city secretary should be in the fifty-one, two, fifty-five range, which would still give her a huge increase, um, a thirteen to fifteen percent increase, and our commitment that she's never been in this role before, she's never been a city secretary before, and we are going to train her. We're going to invest in training for this employee to step up to a new career level, and I don't think you can dismiss that, that is worth something. So I think to move anyone seventeen thousand dollars that is an administrative position in one year, based on a compensation study that I find flaws in, just that position, um, I don't think is the right thing to do. And that's just my opinion, so if you guys want to talk about it, great. And other than that, I think we can move on from compensation.
My question would be, is, under the new, um, three hat position, is that now become a full-time position?
It is a full-time position now, it's a blended position now, it's always been a blended position, from what I understand, it's never been a pure city secretary position in the city of Morgan's Point.
So we're really paying a three-part, or a full, full, is that correct? Kind of sort of?
I'm recommending we, uh, adjust the compensation to a blended rate based on the responsibilities of the position, based on the compensation study that we're using for every other employee.
Right, but in, so go to page twenty-six. What grade would this fall under? So are we going to make a new grade for the city secretary? So at least if we, I, I can somehow view your line of thinking, but now let's put it in context of the, the framework that we trusted an outside expert to kind of come with this. So would you want it to move down to a grade six, to a grade five?
I'm suggesting it be a blended position in the comp study. There's a blended position in there now that's clerk, city secretary, and something else, and they were able to give us comps on that. So I'm just suggesting we take a pause, that, that one piece of the compensation study I think is misleading, because it's not a full-time city secretary job, it never has been, I can't imagine it's going to be more than fifty percent in the near future. Um, so what I did is I said, she's brand new to the position, I'm going to give her forty percent of sixty-three thousand dollars based on the minimum range, thirty percent is an admin position, that's fifty-one thousand, and that's in the mid-range, because she's been doing that a while, she's experienced, and then forty thousand dollars for the payroll piece, and that's just based on a mid-range of TML. So it's bottom level for the city secretary, because she's brand new, and we're going to train her, and then it's a blended rate where she's had experience in other, in the other functions.
So this is us, and again, not, and I know Dalton and I probably have the same mindset on this, um, you know, so this is your approach to this, however, and again, I'll, I'll figure out whatever Dalton did or did not send y'all, but I mean, again, this is why we entrust it to experts, because this is the same reason when we, we got pushed back last year to, or, yeah, last year, last budget year, uh, prior to last budget year, to do the compensation study, because that way we're taking our own analysis and, and frameworks and viewpoints out of it, and we're trusting it to an expert. So right now, basically, what you're trying to tell me is, the expert knows what they do, but they didn't, a- and I know we talked about this, about they didn't interview or anything like this, however, there is a blended role kind of already embedded into this, that if you probably asked all the directors, they would agree that this position warrants to be another director-level position. So if you realign this one and you don't do it by kind of department, yes, this position, where it's in the budget, is the lowest-paid director right now. So that makes sense.
It's also equated to the chief of police and the, our fire chief, and I don't think that position is of the same level. You disagree with me, and maybe council will disagree with me also, but I don't think it's at the same level of Taryn and Matt.
So first, Camille, I know it's really weird that we're talking about you, just so you know, we all respect you and enjoy you and appreciate you, so I know that it's, it's weird, um, because I know it is, it's like parents talking about the kid when they're, like, it's a horrible situation. Um, so, just to play the flip side, okay? Because I do like the, the blended, the blended idea, that makes dollars and cents to me. What would it take, like, what has to happen in our city, Carrie, for the city secretary to be a full-time position? Like, what, what does it actually take for that to happen?
Well, I don't like using that term, a- and I think it's disingenuous to that position, whether it's Camille or whoever came before it. So again, these are some of the things that is just going to be new, because y'all are all new to this position. You, you, you think you know what a position does, and I'm not trying to single out anyone or anything like that, but until we've talked to other city, or until y'all have talked to other city officials and see what roles and responsibilities that a similar position within our city does in that city, it, it's tough to make a comparison. So that's why, you know, again, the pushback was, I could have, I could have used the Lakeways or the, you know, La Gavistas and, and all the rich cities, and of course, if, if we do that, we're going to be really low comparatively.
Sure.
So when we set up a framework for a compensation study, and especially when we had asked Belton that they had used it, we're not trying to compare our salaries to Belton's, we're trying to use our percentages of our salary to Belton versus another city, like a Hewitt or Midway to Waco, and so that's how the framework of, of the compensation study was designed. So, in, in the same context, you know, we don't know, and, and again, this is just, we're in a uncharted position, you know, and so when we're diving into the weeds, you know, as, as Dalton tried to explain it, I agree with them on this. And again, I, I know from y'all's seat, it doesn't look that way, but from this, this chair it does. And so again, it's trust but verified, but this is going to be a really tricky one to say, well, let's just make a new position for this. Well, that's why this, this chart was, was done, so we could use it as a framework going forward. So, I mean, we can rework it, but-
Well, the compensation study, again, like, so we're a bedroom community, and I know many people don't like that, that comment, but if we're comparing it to a city that has actual tax revenue that's not from the homeowners, it's, I mean, and, and again, I've done my digging around different municipalities all over the state of Texas, it's hard, because we're sort of an enigma.
Yep.
I mean, we really are, um, but that's what makes us so awesome.
Yeah, no, I mean, a hundred percent agree, but I mean, and that's the thing of, that's why we didn't want to put it on any one council member, and not this council, but last council, but pay an expert. So, that's the same way, we, we hear y'all say use studies and studies, but, well, let's, let's take what the study was, and then let's kind of edit it to reflect what we want to see.
No, that's not it. Had I been involved in the compensation study, I would have pushed back on the city secretary. As far as getting the compensation group, which I highly respect, um, to, don't look at the job description, but let us tell you what that position has been. I think we've beat this up, you guys know how I feel, um, I would like to move on with a, you know, some type of guidance. Do we let Camille get in, do her position, do a ninety-day review, um, you know, I mean, do we want to increase somebody's salary thirty-eight percent in one year, based on moving into a position that has never been a full-time city secretary in the history of our city? I mean, I just think it's huge precedent, and like Roxanne said, this is the new normal for that city secretary position.
A couple thoughts.
We want to sleep on it?
No, 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 I was, I was processing, um, just a couple things from left field, different perspective maybe, is, you know, I, I kind of equate it to like promotions in the military, you know, you get, you get promoted based on potential, um, you know, awards are for performance, promotions are for potential, um, and that's kind of the way I see this, is, yeah, it's a huge jump. Um, I have to wonder, though, with these other positions that we're absorbing and, and mind-melding into other positions or other spots, I mean, we, we seem to, there seems to be a lot of confusion about the job description, um, what does it entail? What does a person do? And I appreciate your numbers, by the way, I really do. Um, you know, what does it entail, what's involved? And my question would be, and what's kind of floating out there is, not what is involved now, what's going to be involved? Um, you know, and, and, uh, a couple thoughts on, you know, you throw that number up there and it becomes the norm, um, okay, is that a bad thing? Not necessarily, because that, you-
Is that a question?
I don't know, that's, therein lies, lies the question. Um, and I guess a lot of it for me is kind of the ignorance of, again, hanging out down there, daying and doubt, and not really knowing what the hell goes on other than the basic stuff that I see, I'll be honest with you, straight up, so, um, I've never gone down there and really hung out with the ladies like that for a couple days at a time. Um, I'm inclined to just support the position, because again, I go, I go back to my, my track record, so to speak, um, and what I would ask is if we did support it, is let's make sure that the jobs and the duties that we give her, or whoever fills that position whenever, are commensurate with that pay. So, if they're not right now, let's move them up there and let's get them to where they need to be. That's my thought.
Or adjust the pay to the actual work being performed. Or adjust the pay to the actual work being performed.
The problem, I'm not suggesting it's a problem, but if you, if you go in at a salary of X, and you find out that really you're doing kinda not as much as you thought was gonna happen, trying to adjust that down, yeah, you can't do that. There's not enough dynamite in the world to do that. So you gotta be kinda careful. Once you said it, that's the base.
We don't want to either, because that's demoralizing, yes.
No, and, and we ran into that issue with the comp study, that part of it, if you go back to your slides, was that no one would get a decrease in pay, because we did have at least one position that had a realignment in duties and was making above what the proposed A-Skill had. So it was gonna take us several years for that position to catch up to what it was. But yes, I mean...
I think that's the position that was hired as a financial director at one salary.
It was, I mean, that's why, I wasn't gonna...
Okay, but let me just finish. Let me just, no, that's okay. It was hired at one level as a financial director, but when they moved over to grant, the salary wasn't changed. Here's another situation we have, where we're having a vacancy, we're moving somebody else over into that position. Now's the time. It wasn't addressed at the time with the grant person.
No, a- and I know, like I said, I'm, I was trying to be more vague. I, I think sometimes with, without calling individual positions or people's names out in a public setting, it's probably better. But so, yeah, that's me trying to be PC, or whatever the, the right word would be, but...
I won't use names.
Yeah.
So I would, I would like to say, I looked at the, this whole salary in- increase, it looks very reasonable. I would like you to consider that new position, that, at accountant, city secretary. I think that Dorothy's explanations are reasonable, and I'm not gonna put an exact number on it, but I would like you to consider making that a combination position.
Well, I mean, and that's the thing, just, it's not that I'm gonna consider, y'all, y'all tell me where you want me to move it. I mean, and that's really, i- i- if that's the, the route, the route, the road or the route you take, my only recommendation would is say, pick a grade. I would think, i- if you, if you don't want it as a director-level grade, and just if we go back to page...
26.
Six, right. I would either say grade six or grade five, and basically, we're gonna start at the midpoint, so, or the, the minimum. So it's not gonna be the exact amount. Page 26, in the original one.
In the original one. The gray box at 26.
Can you tell me the number, because I can't? Oh, I'll look at, I'll look at them both.
At least, then we're slightly using the study we...
There are several manager positions at grade five. That looks like a, does that look, I mean, to me, that looks like a reasonable place.
But see, and, and probably like I said, I, I think we'll know more, or y'all will know more, and, and trust the staff with their recommendation. So at least if you're gonna do this, I would say grade six. And say, minimum, step one, basically, it's, it's one grade what was above what we had. And then we, again, my guess is, me and Dalton will keep coming back to make it a director-level position every year. And if we need to rewrite, rewrite the job description, then that's what we do.
Well, let's just get, let's align the job description with the actual reality of the job.
Right, no, right, but so...
No, and I'm all for that. I just don't know if the city needs a full-time city secretary. Okay, do we have a number?
Yeah, so the, the, I was using step one, and so what's in the budget is step one, grade seven, so kinda...
No, that's, so right now, that's in the budget. So grade six would be minimum is 55.
Right.
And the max would be 83.
And if we...
Grade six, step one.
If we move it to grade six.
We can always go up.
We can always go up. It's, but you can't go down.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely harder, but...
And even grade, even grade five has a good range, and there are...
I know, I was thinking grade five, actually.
No, and that, again, I, I know y'all are looking at it this way, but a- again, you might not wanna view it as a grade seven right now, but you will hopefully after TML and getting to know some other things. I, I would be adamantly opposed to anything lower than a grade six.
Appreciate your honesty, Carrie.
And I will still keep fighting for a grade seven next year, apparently.
Let's just get those responsibilities aligned.
I'm a six, in case anybody's wondering. I'm, I'm leaning, again, you know me, I'm, I'm leaning more towards the max anyway. So if it's going to come down, I humbly request that we take her to a six.
A solid eight, Jimbo.
Minimum level of six. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, six, step one.
I could compromise on that with the idea, it's not nickeling-diming, it is not trying to find money in the budget. It is aligning our compensation to the responsibilities of each position that our residents are getting. So...
Okay, and so, grade six and all other salaries are appro, are, we agree on? I don't think we're voting on it, but we agree on it.
No, I think we agree on that. Carrie, you have that captured? Does somebody have that all captured? Because I'm not capturing anything right now. Carrie, you have direction to...
Yep.
Okay. So the next thing up there is construction in progress and fixed, fixed asset replacement. Carrie, you wanna direct us to that page? And then I think that's probably a pretty quick discussion. I'm on page 23. Is that the right page?
Yeah. Make a mess of this. Okay, so really, and I think the easiest part to do is also, if you can probably pull up page 35.
Okay, what's page 35?
That's the budget proof.
First one. Got it, all right.
All right, so I know Dalton has told everyone of y'all that, you know, basically, you, you know, again, and I'll be honest, that, you know, this budget book, I, I think the staff, me more so, you know, first, let's say we get a C+. You know, next year, we're going for B-, you know, stuff like that. We're just trying to make gradual improvements. And, and I can tell you, this is night-and-day debt better than the two years ago when I found it. So knowing, knowing here, that the end thing is that we're trying to make it cleaner, to make the percentages more worthwhile. So right now, there are still kinda two oddballs in here, so we, we still have, uh... So a- at a high level, if y'all want me to go line item by line item, I don't think that's worth our time. But really, you know, a couple big-picture ones, you know, obviously, we moved $200,000 of roads out of what we typically had used out of the general fund, and we moved it to the CIP. It's easier and cleaner for y'all to see, and then that way, it doesn't distort the general fund expenditures.
I agree.
So, however, we did keep the roads from the sales tax as a part of that. So probably like the project that we just happened over on Lake Forest and Buttercup, or whatever the road is.
Poppy something.
Yeah, Golden Poppy, I think that's right.
Golden and Poppy.
Golden Poppy, so I, I think that makes sense to keep the amount that we get from the sales tax piece for potholes and, you know, cutouts and stuff like that. So right now, it's not in here, but we had kinda discussed it at an earlier point. So roughly, that's about 250. I'm just gonna round up or down to the nearest $1,000 to deal. So what my thought process was, it's, it's not obviously captured in here, and whenever y'all wanna vote on it and approve it after we, we figure out the cash, unrestricted cash sheet, you know, I, I assume council was gonna spend about $750,000 in general fund balance to basically spend $1 million on roads this year. That's kinda what my goal was. I know in Dorothy's comments later on, she wants to get that number closer to 500 and 500. But if we look at what's been historically done, and again, we, sometimes it, it, you, you kinda cherry-picking. You, you get to blame council or, or your staff on certain things, but then you wanna bring it back up when it favors your argument or anything like this. But to get from basically $100,000 to $500,000 is probably unrealistic, in my professional opinion. So I was trying to do a compromise, and, and what my thought process was, that we would go to 250 this year, 375,000 basically on this sheet next year, and $500,000 in year three, 25, so...
And you know, one of my comments, you brought it up on the, how much do we take from fund balance? If we go ahead and, let's say we're gonna spend a million and we take 750 from fund balances, and Dennis, we've talked about maybe having a year's worth of unrestricted cash. So we'll take that down to 340 days or 93% of a year, so we're still in that year. But the other thing, and maybe this is just optics for me, but if we can get $500,000 out of the balanced budget for roads, that's only 17 cents of every dollar of our property taxes going to roads. If we drop it down to 5, 250,000, that's only about nine cents in every dollar of our property tax revenue that's going to roads. It just seems low. 17 cents seems low, but that's putting a half a million dollars in roads. So only 17 cents if we go half a million. So I don't know if we can find half a million dollars in the budget. We're, we're there with 100. And as we get through the budget, we might find more money to put in roads. But we like the threshold of a year, and we're dipping down. We're going into...
Yeah, but, so even on that unrestricted cash sheet, so, and I know people have said this, but they're not necessarily sure if this is a conservative budget or not. But so even on that sheet that I, I tried to hammer at home, that if we take out the CIP numbers, we had an extra $150,000 revenues over, you know, actual revenues over budgeted revenues. And I think the number was like $400,000 expenditures, o- less budgeted expenditures. So we're constantly, whatever people say, whether it's misleading or not, we're actually in a positive growth trajectory for the city. So I, I, some, you know, I can throw numbers out of my, you know what, and, yeah, it sounds good, but, you know, I, I'm trying to give y'all stats and numbers and data points to actually back it up.
And maybe we get through the whole budget and see all the pluses and minuses, and then see where we are relative to how much we can fund roads out of the current budget and how much has to come out of fund balance. We have the money, that's not it. It's a question of how we fund it.
I've always wondered if it's a large, large balance, because there are al- always emergencies to pop up that we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to ascertain what they are right now.
Yeah, but, but... Not, not $3.6 million worth of emergencies.
Well, I know, but we're...
Hopefully not. If there's bigger fish to fry, that big of an emergency.
Year at 2,000.
Maybe we're going down to 300 days or 200 days, you know what I'm saying? It, it, when you start keep lowering it down, that three's not always like the million-dollar deal, but...
No.
It's not cutting stone. That was my preference, so we all get what you wanna do.
You know, and obviously with the five new brand, brand-new council members, you know, I, I think this would be a perfect thing of, we can give y'all a laundry list of things we want to see y'all kinda ask other council members at TML, but...
Okay.
You know, what, what do they do? You know, is it six months? Because I think the easiest thing on that unrestricted ca, or the restricted cash sheet is to say, hey, you know, if I have the number as 4.9 million, let's just put three, or six months, and then we also put six months to get to 12 months, six months reserved for road projects. If, if you know what is the fan, then we're not gonna fund those road projects. So in theory, it's just optics, but it will still know what we can and cannot spend.
Yeah.
So, all right, but yeah, so the, the only other tricky thing to me was the vehicle, the two vehicles in code and maintenance. Ideally, since these were more of a necessity, and we don't really have the full asset listing for us to, to, you know, to dive into, we actually kept those as a part of the M&amp;O budget instead of the, the FARF. So you will see, you know, 50, in, in capital replacements, 6305, both of them hit the general fund, but we have a $53,000, or a $61,000 vehicle for code, and then I think it's like $47,500 for maintenance. But ideally, next year, it wouldn't change anything on the bottom line, but i- i- if, if we were a year down the road and, and the, the same fact pattern was, was here for next year, we wouldn't have 100,000, we'd have 200,000. Our general fund expenditures would go down by 100,000, and our FARF expenditures would go up by 100,000. But then that way, we can see big picture, how much dollars of every budget do we need to set aside for vehicles? And that way, we're not pitting department versus department. Y'all get to see the big picture, so... And then the, the same thing with CIP. I mean, typically, we, we could have that money in the, in the general fund. It just, it makes it look cleaner, so...
So of the $634,000 that's in the capital improvements and replacements, how much of that is coming out of current fund balance? All of it? I mean, I'm sorry, out of the operating budget? All of it?
Say that again.
Okay, so...
Well, I mean, all, all this budget, all this, the 634 is all in the budget packet. So roughly, we have 300,000 out of either fixed asset replacement or CIP, so if you take 300,000...
So it's all budgeted and we're balanced with all these capital expenditures? Do we wanna take a minute and look through the capital expenditures and go ahead and decide about them, real quick? You wanna take a minute, and then if you have any questions, you can ask Carrie?
And, and I will say this, though, too, so Aaron is a pretty good salesman, if you have not learned that about him. So the FARF, basically, I put initial funding assets to be determined. So he needs a, well, and again, every department needs a lot, but realistically, it was gonna look weird optically that if we replaced the 2017 vehicle, because, and, and I think, and he can correct me later when we had that workshop, that was at no cost to the city. The squad, the medical squad car was donated, you know, bought, bought and purchased from the auxiliary, I think. So, and I think Grant, uh, Taryn, with his grant-writing ability, got most of the equipment funded and, and stuff like that. So some of the things kinda fell through, that then right now, it didn't necessarily look like it was gonna align with probably what we wanted to present y'all. Like, if, if I was in y'all's chair and I showed that we were trying to replace a 2017 vehicle, when we have assets from 2008, 2009, you're gonna look kinda like Pat's looking at me right now. So anyway, so we just put it as a placeholder. Taryn will probably still try to sell you that he needs a squad car, but we can make that argument in December. So, because he's gonna make a pretty persuasive argument. So if you are asking questions, everything but the $100,000 for the fixed asset replacement fund is kind of earmarked for a specific capital outlay in roads.
And the $19,000 in the police RMS, that's Record Maintenance System and Electronic Citation. So Matt, that's what you carry around in your car to give citations rather than writing it down on a piece of paper?
Yeah, so two different things. Currently, we have, uh, we, currently, we do not pay for RMS system. We piggyback off of the county, and they are getting rid of that themselves. And so we're, every, every entity is joining in to the same similar concept, which is all the Bell County agencies, instead of it being housed or produced by Bell County themselves communications, that it is through Temple PD. So essentially, same thing, we're just jumping on board with that. So that's the RMS portion, that's where we write all of our reports, hold our evidence records. All of our records managements go through there. And then the electronic ticket writing is what we use every day. It's, 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 electronic ticket writing is the original purpose of it, but it houses all of our criminal trespass warnings, our vehicle impounds.
So this is a computer to service those, software, to service the software, or this is software?
Yep, software, yeah, uh, cloud-based software.
Okay, so this is the software piece, okay.
Seems pretty standard, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and eventually, the, and then eventually, once we get fully, because the RMS is still in the production stage, goes live sometime first quarter, calendar year of 2024. Once we go live on that, we will eventually migrate off of our own ticket-writing software and be fully housed in that. So we're anticipating a drop in those funding. That's our anticipation, as long as it works out as pictured, or...
We know how well software works out. So we're paying for it now?
Uh, we don't, we don't, essentially, your, your tax salaries that go to 911 services pay for it now, yeah.
So it'll be the same thing, except...
Yeah.
Just an updated piece of software.
Yes, yes, and the same, same concept, just a different, different parent, so to say.
So basically, capital year-over-year is increasing $239,000, and roughly, 300 of that is roads. Between the 200 and then the 100, that's a placeholder on unknown capital.
Yeah, I, I mean, I really don't wanna, I mean, and that's y'all's call, but I mean, really, we, we do have old vehicles, so I really, if you were saying 300,000 on roads...
Don't wanna designate that to roads right now.
Yeah, no, not...
Okay, so it's, um...
So really, it went from 125 to 250. Right.
In addition to the vehicles and capital that's already in here.
So in theory, we might, y'all could buy two different types of heavy equipment, or if, if Taryn sells you on that, you can get in the squad car, you know, or, or whatever. Or, I mean, like I said, we can, we can pivot, a- and if y'all wanna assign that to roads, too, we can do that. But like I said, I think that's at least gonna get the train and the ball rolling to something that I think will be really beneficial to the city. All in favor?
I'm, I'm, Stephen's still looking, I can tell.
So, uh, as, as an employee, let me jump in. So I would like to offer just my opinion on the, on, you talked about the FARF, right? Capital, yeah, so really, I'll just give you the history on our, on our side of things, that's all I can really talk about. When we don't have a FARF put in place, it...
it, it makes it hindrance when new council comes in and changes and whatnot. And I know you're, you don't want to tie the hands of a incoming council and whatnot like that as well. But having a plan such as a salary compensation or a fixed asset replacement plan or a capital improvement plan really helps because if you say we want to skip a year on a patrol car and then they come around and then something happens and then you're like, hey, uh, we don't know if we have enough money for that, then now you're two years down the road and then you're just, then you, then like with salaries, you have to spend a bunch of money to play catch up or something drastic happens and you're like, okay, now we're into our fund balance.
Yeah, I think this council is all on board with that. And we're looking forward to the workshop to have with all the department heads in October, November, to talk about a three to five year plan. We're all over that, we love it.
Yeah, and so, so our, our history is we, we didn't have that before. Or we had one, but they never funded it, so to say, way years and years, years ago. And so when it came down to it, it got skipped and we, we went years without patrol cars and then it, then it ate up our maintenance and replacement, so.
Carrie, you're loud and clear.
Absolutely.
We want to be planful, too. Anything else on capital? You guys have any questions? Carrie, you have any other comments?
Whatever y'all, if you have anymore, just let me know.
Excited to get our roads fixed.
So I'm, I'm good with the proposal on capital. And I think we can go ahead, can we go ahead and, we'll approve it in the budget, but we can talk about it more in October, November timeframe with C I P. But I think for this coming up year and this budget, we'd like to go ahead and fulfill these?
Yeah, I mean, that's our, that's our intention.
No, I mean, the council. Okay.
The only thing, I guess, then it came back to one of your other point is I can take out the ten thousand from library and put a note, so that would free up ten thousand.
Oh, okay, yeah, Carrie and I talked about, we've typically had an unwritten rule or whatever, that if the grant hasn't been approved, we don't put it in the budget. Because the police and the fire, they get grants all the time. They don't have any grant money in their budget. So there was a grant that was put into the library and we said, why don't we just be consistent? It's only ten thousand dollars, but if the grant hasn't been approved, we're not going to put it in the budget. Is everybody okay with that?
And it's been approved by council, the resolution, so we're just.
Right.
Award letter.
We don't know if we're going to get it or not.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So we'll pull it from the budget until the grant.
And we could do a resolution to match the funds if need be.
But, but at one year, you will have a ten thousand dollar hit to the city budget.
Right.
I just did it year one instead of year two.
Okay, so that's coming out. Anything else on capital? Okay, property tax. Okay, so we are, need to decide on our property tax rate. We talked about, and Carrie, you need to take the lead on this discussion. But we talked about a property tax rate now of point five eight cents, which is both for operations and for debt coverage. And Carrie sent around, and Dalton sent around a new analysis that they just got last Friday. It talks about the three different rates, the de minimis rate and the budget approval rate and the resident approval rate and blah, blah, blah. But anyway, and so we, we said we would look at that after we got that information in. We have the information in, do we want to take a look at it as a sidebar? I thought if we are going to increase the rate, we should look at a senior exemption for the first time in Morgan's Point. And so I sent around some information to you guys on who gives senior exemptions, what cities in our region give senior exemptions. And, but Carrie and I met today, we've missed the deadline. I'd like this in the minutes, please. We cannot address a senior exemption for the city for this tax year because the deadline was July fifteenth. And we didn't get that to us in time to be able to make that decision. So now we, that's, so that's off the table, so now we're just dealing with the tax rate. You want to walk us through? Right.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so I mean, in theory.
We haven't approved anything, we didn't get the information till Friday. Yeah, because they didn't have the information either. So we just got the information on Friday. So the last, you weren't at the, I'm sorry, you weren't at the last budget meeting. But we said, let's wait till we get that tax information in and then we'll make a decision at that point.
It actually came out higher.
Right.
Truth in taxation was actually higher.
So Carrie, do you want to take a minute and?
Sell us, Carrie.
Well, I think they would prefer to leave the budget the way it is, but.
I think that they actually are contemplating the raise.
Oh, okay.
I could be wrong.
If you raise it, can I get a cup?
I doubt it. No, I mean, really, so.
Do you want me to put some rates up on a flip chart?
Sure. I mean, it, it's tough because, I mean, obviously, y'all are the elected officials. So you never want to be the elected officials that raise rates. But here, and like I said, this is, this was bad planning, not just from the last council, but several councils ago. Debt is a good thing in city government. And so we have unfunded certain things because we wanted to be debt poor, which leaves y'all in a good position. And, and again, I'm making these assumptions just based on the data in front of me. However, so two years ago, when we decided the council wanted to, you know, the mayor wanted to get rid of the maintenance fees, that was an easy time to raise rates, saying we're getting rid of this stupid maintenance fee that everyone hates paying and stuff like that. So we'd gone from like fifty nine to the eight to sixty one ninety two. And that was really the first year that the property tax really started probably going up above the ten percent cap. So last year, when they spiked, we, along with every other taxing entity in Bell County, lowered our rates. So it might have been a little presumptuous, but we still had some room between the proposed rate and the voter approval rate. So this year, obviously, as new value, as, as values go up, all three of those rates, the no new revenue, the voter approval rate and the de minimis rate have gone down year over year. So right now, fifty eight cents is the proposed tax rate in here. And I think the, I was trying to pull it up, I didn't have to print it off. What is the de minimis rate? I think it's like sixty three even, almost, sixty three ninety one. So that. Sixty three ninety one. But this would probably be something that y'all learn in T M L, too, probably with the C R S I's, with our revenue diversity, we can just ignore the no new revenue rate. It's probably completely meaningless unless we screw up and don't meet the timeline and we have to go to that one, which would be an emergency. And so. But yeah, so right now, if the proposed tax rate's at fifty eight cents and basically you guys have some decision making. So if we want to not use fund balance and not kind of, again, I'm going to use this term loosely, so don't glare at me, but nickel and dime the budget, if we want to find another hundred thousand dollars in, in dollars to spend, then the easy button is to raise the taxes by two cents and go up to a flat sixty cents.
Taken into consideration that this is the year that the Texas legislature cut school taxes, the exemption for school taxes, which we would be B I S D, they increased that exemption to, was it?
From forty thousand to a hundred thousand.
Forty thousand to a hundred. So most people, if your value is flat, doesn't increase, then your taxes should go down. And Carrie even did an analysis of a two hundred thousand dollar house here in Morgan's Point based on the tax rates, that that one particular person was going to save six hundred dollars on their taxes based on that new exemption. So we're in a period of time here.
Exemption and then, and then the state, it was my guess somewhat, Bellton I S D would lower their tax rate. And I think based on just articles that I've read, that the state is going to come back and buy down the school district M and O rate by about ten cents. So it's.
So the rate's going down as well as the value that you're taxed on.
And this is going to be a weird, you know, I, I know everyone probably hates Bell County appraisal district, you know, in this, in the county, but they're going to have their hands full when this passes. Because if you have your house in escrow or you pay it all, you're going to end up getting a refund. Because you're going to pay, you're going to pay your bill October thirty first. You, as a voter, are going to go vote for this increase in homestead exemption in November, whatever it is. And then by the time they process it, then I'm assuming this is the way the mechanics will work out, that then you'll come back and get a refund check, unless you want to apply it to next year.
Now, do we have any idea, because I've lost a piece of paper? The information that came back from Bell County appraisal district, right?
Right.
That, that you got on Friday?
Truth in taxation.
Yeah. What happened to the overall value of the residents here in Morgan's Point? I don't, I can't believe that they were flat.
No.
Absolutely not.
It, it, it's not. And so there's still, because Dalton had it in his email, there's still roughly about twenty million dollars in, under A R V review. So, but if we, you, you can't factor that in to your revenue calculation. So what we had done, though, was I can look back historically and say, hey, this was the initial certified value that Bell County gave to us and this was the T N T based on last year. And that kind of ratio of where we ended up versus where we started on property tax values across the city, that's kind of what I applied and what the, what I built the budget around. So depending on what we do with the collection ratios that, and I think we talked about it the very first one, that roughly we collect about ninety nine percent out of everyone.
But if the, if the average, I mean, what was the average increase percentage wise of residents' homes in this year? Not in the tax rate or not in their homestead exemption? Just what was their house worth last year versus this year? And on, in general, what was that increase? Do we know?
Yeah, and that's going to have.
I guess I'm just trying to be simple.
Yeah, so if you had a two hundred thousand dollar house last year, my guess is it's on the tax roll for two hundred and twenty.
Okay, and, and that would be kind of helpful if, for, you know, if Joe Smith's house is, was two fifty last year and is three hundred this year.
Well.
Then, and even with the Bell County, you know, the school exemptions or, you know, all of that, what are they going to pay? And that's where I think it's important for our people to understand that even, no matter what kind of number we come up with, there's going to be a higher looking number, I think, generally. But most of that is from increased property values, which is really good if you're selling.
Correct.
But it isn't good if you're buying and/or paying taxes. But people need to understand that it's not just arbitrary pulled out of your ear. It's based upon the value of your home. And, and again, it's my understanding, it's a hundred percent of market values what your house is supposedly worth. And that's not hard to find. I mean, you can go to Zillow and find out what your house is worth.
And you can't get taxed on a hundred percent of your market value, then, as long as you're homesteaded. You, you do have that homestead cap built into it. But so to Dorothy's comment that, yeah, so what I did was the, the house value last year was like one seventy and so then I went up to one eighty seven. And so factoring in, factoring in whatever the rates were last year, this was what your total taxes were, five thousand dollars. And then this year, even at the hundred and eighty five thousand, instead of paying five thousand, you're going to pay four thousand four hundred.
If there's somehow, whatever we do, if there's some way to make that very clear to the people, then they'll have a much better appreciation for where the increases or decreases come from. I mean, it's all in the, it's all in the paper, but quite frankly, most of us don't read the paper.
We need Taren.
I, when I look at that fifty eight cents and we, we, you did get a balanced budget based on that fifty eight cents. I, as a taxpayer, the, the taxes I pay are astronomically ridiculously high. And I, why would, why would we increase it? You know, we have, we have spare money that we can pull out for roads if we need to. We had, we have a good balanced budget. We were able to give raises to all of our employees. And I guess I don't, in, in my simple mind, it'd be like, why would we do that? I know it's be, I know it's like a way to sneak in extra taxes now because they're lowering, lowering it somewhere else, but maybe we need less taxes over.
Well, I don't think it's sneaky.
No, it's just prudent.
It gives us an opportunity.
Right.
To work on the road, like to put more money towards roads.
Right.
Ultimately, many people were like, your roads and your parks are horrible. We need to fix these, we need to fix these. And so finding, but you know, again, I'm all about that, like, lower taxes. So it's like, it's, I mean, it affects me, too.
Yeah, it does, and it's an opportunity lost.
That would just my, that's just my question. Why would we, why would we raise them? I, and I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about decreasing rates. I think maybe we're talking.
I think the easiest answer is probably to keep it at fifty eight cents here and almost just get out, out on the record that we're going to keep it at fifty eight cents next year, too. That, I mean, all these rates will go down. I mean, obviously, values might stabilize a little bit, but you have that homestead cap that your appraised value will not equal your market value. So even though next year, if the, if the, if the housing market stabilizes, your taxes, your taxable value will go up because you probably have that homestead cap built into it. So I think now, if we're trying to get out on the front of things, almost right now, is just say, hey, we're going to keep it at fifty eight cents this year and we're going to keep it at fifty eight cents next year. Which I, I know obviously can change, but I mean, really, that's going to tell you that probably next year, all those rates are going to go down at least another three cents. You know, we can't do anything more to the debt rate, you know, with the, the blend between the I N S and the M and O. We are maxed out on debt with the debt that we have outstanding. So I seriously doubt we're going to get debt without any audits. So we can, we might be able to revisit that in twenty twenty four. But, you know, that's going to be the thing of getting proactive and figuring out how we actually increase the I N S rate sooner than later.
So I was, I was obviously asking that as a question. I wasn't saying, let's not raise taxes. Why would we raise them now, Carrie? That's what I wanted to know.
It's to put more money into the roads. That, that would be the simplest thing. So like I said, I mean, I, what I try to get is what I, when I listen to what all y'all kind of campaigned on and stuff like this, I was trying to find the balance of where we were and where we are. And, you know, like I said, I do not advise to go from one hundred to five hundred thousand in one year. But I think if we take a logical approach, saying one fifteen to two fifty to three seventy five to five hundred, knowing that in the same way, let's just keep the tax rate the flat, you know, for two more, you know, as long as we can. Obviously, right now, the voters can still petition, since we're above the voter approval rate. However, if, if they can look at the budget and if y'all take questions and whoever, that if they understand that they're, the raise, you know, that, that we're not going down, because I don't think Temple's going down, I do think Bellton is going down. But if they can see that we have a plan of how we're spending, basically keeping the taxes flat, and even if we do it one more year, that if they can start seeing where their money is going, their tax dollars are going, then I think that would be the, the easy button to do.
I think if, if, if we as a council go with that and say, okay, yeah, but we're doing that because we need extra money to pay for the roads. Because I don't think there's three people that would criticize fixing some of the roads, anyway. And if we keep that promise, not a promise, but you know, that's our goal, is to get that whatever extra money that is available. And then we're not going to go out and buy airplanes and, you know, yachts for the lake. We're going to, we're going to use it for roads and it's going to be dedicated to the roads and trying to get the roads back up to par.
Well, there are.
I don't think anybody could criticize, it's too heavy on them.
Right, no, and there are years where we invest in the employees. That was the comp study and that was two hundred and fifty. We stepped up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring our employees to market and that was the right thing to do. And now, we, hopefully, we're a little stabilized, we'll get the healthcare fixed. But then it, it, to me, our next step is roads. And so how much infrastructure? So why aren't we putting the same amount that we put in employees? Why aren't we getting close to the same amount in roads?
And that's, I mean, again, we can, we just don't have to do it based on the levied tax rate for this year.
I agree. I agree.
Right. So I mean, it's, we can figure it out, because like I said, I, I plan for a decrease in our cash balance by about 750,000 and, what was the other number? There's something else. But I mean, yeah, so I figured y'all are going to spend about $750,000 out of unbalance over the next 12 months. I did not budget for, that I budgeted for, but just not within the budget in front of you.
Right. Okay, so we'll get through the budget, see how much goes into roads. We're going to hold property tax rate at 58 cents, because we can come up with a fully balanced budget, maybe not funding roads as much as we'd like to, but we have a balanced budget with 58 cents.
Yeah, then, like I said, I would almost, you know, not that you have to do it now, but I mean, that would be, and also we have 12 months to, to look into it. But I mean, that would probably be the thing, is almost keep the tax rate the flat next year.
And I'd like to look into a senior discount early next year, maybe in May?
Yep.
Okay.
Just one of, I had a lot of citizens who've been writing me over the years. I think my group is different than your group. But, but one of the, one of the person who wrote me said, they didn't like that full $3 million in savings. He said, that just makes city government think they can spend it on whatever. And so I don't, I don't know that. I agree with that. But anyhow, that, I just thought, well, if we do spend, we have a large savings. We have a large amount put aside. And typically, they say you should have at least 90 days up to a year. We're almost close to a year, from what I understand, on the very basic, you know, emergency fund stuff we would need. So I don't, I wouldn't mind at all spending that down a little bit this year. I think we'll have the money there to do what we need to do, so.
Well, they, I mean, we're well over a year, as it currently is.
Right now.
Right. Yeah. So even next year, like I said, even if we spend that 750, even with Dorothy's numbers, that's if, if the budget, one set of assumptions actually holds true to the penny. So more likely, even if we spend that 750,000, we might still end with one year's of reserves.
Right.
Next year.
That would be amazing. That would be a great goal.
Uh, sure.
Okay, some of us are going to take a two-minute break.
Are we, okay.
Dennis, can we take a two-minute break?
Two-minute break. All right.
No, hold on. So if you go to page, we'll just do it this way. If you go to page 56,
Two minutes.
that's the police department budget.
Which page?
56.
56.
Yep. And again, this wouldn't take the place in the budget timeline, because you need all the detail. But, you know, basically, in every council packet, I give you, I hide the detail, but you're still going to have, you know, 14 line items per category. So instead of seeing, you know, two and a half pages of, of police personnel, you're going to see one line item that says personnel. The next line item is going to be legal audit. And, and some of these are just categories because it's applicable in other, other departments. But you can get through one department in, you know, two inches on that cheat.
Yeah. So he's, on, on this page, so the personnel that he's talking about on police goes two and a half pages. That will now be one line item.
Except, except for the, in the budget is the reason why it's so, I typically don't have all the detail in the monthly financial packets. But you would still see salaries, hourly, certificate pay, incentive pay, so on and so forth. There's no reason for y'all to look at that. So really, with, since we've switched and gone to use MUNI code, we can publish packets, but we don't have to print them all. So I think I will still continue to publish the 80 pages, 90 pages of financial data. But then I can give y'all more a 13-page report that summarizes it at a high level. And we can try it out for a couple of months. I can rerun it for July, because I don't think, Camille, did we, we didn't include the detail in that printed out packets?
August packet, no.
But it is on the website. So I will run that report as through the end of July, which is what should tie to tie, you know, should...
Wow.
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic.
But so then you can look at it, and then you can look at it over the next, we, we don't need to discuss it. But if, if you like that moving forward, we will just include that printout instead of the 80 pages. We can still put both of the reports on the website for the resident or y'all. If you have another question, you can look at the website first, and hopefully come ask me afterwards. So.
Love it. Okay, so...
But again, I, I do want to highlight that it, it takes time on some of these things. As mind-boggling as it actually is, it, it took MUNI code almost a month and a half to produce something like this, that you would think would be standard. And so I know Dalton had always talked about prior to me getting there, they, they used the 80 pages. And I always want to get y'all to just look at the budget proof. If you really, that way you can see the big picture dollars, that this is a balanced budget across the citywide coffers. But here, if you want to, at, at, at least if you can understand at a high level, the budget proof. But then now, this is that next step from the proof down to a little bit more level of detail. And if you really want to go look at the 90 pages, be my guest. So.
Okay, so next on my list is rate increases for the different departments and the different services that we offer in the city. And I just wanted to try to capture all the different rate increases that we've talked about. And we're not going to get them into this budget. But I'd like to start getting them on the council agenda for the coming year. And I don't know which one we look at first. You guys tell us. I don't know if we want to look at commercial water rates first. And, you know, it's a process. I mean, it takes time to dig into data, see what our historical rates are, see what the volume is, customers, et cetera. And then to come up with ranges, ranges of rates to see what they, you know, want to recommend. So that would be my suggestion on rates. Don't include anything in the budget because we're not ready to pull any triggers. Know that we want to look at our rates because some of these rates haven't been increased in 15 years. And start targeting these, the different departments for rate increases.
Dorothy, is that something we could look at in the workshop we're planning in October, November?
I would say this is too detailed.
Too detailed.
Because I think that's going to be strategy and capital and planning, three to five years. And so this is more implementation, taking a look at our rates in our city and evaluating them, and then coming up with recommendations.
And I guess part of it, from, from my viewpoint, is some of this has to, you have to have increases just because stuff goes up.
Yeah.
But some of them, I'll just throw it out. The marina, if the marina's making money, and there's a little bit of money set upside for whatever, the refloat, the dock, or whatever it is, you know, that's a huge benefit to the community. And if it's making, if it's breaking even, if it's paying all of its bills, why would I want to jack it up? Because Franks does? I don't give a care what Frank does. That's his problem.
Well, because we, in my opinion, the marina hasn't had significant capital investments in a while. We're going to have to, and Ronnie, I think, is going to talk to us in the CIP in the fall about what he wants to do with the marina. And I think it'd be nice to tell our residents that the marina's self-funding, that the city isn't funding. Now, if in a case, the city has to fund something because it's extraordinary, an emergency or whatever...
But it's never had to do that historically.
No, no.
As a matter of fact, when it was hit by a tornado, the citizens of this town actually rebuilt the marina. So it's, it's always been that positive.
Right.
Yeah.
And those rates, just as an example, haven't increased since 2015.
Keep in mind that, and now this is not current, but about eight years ago, we ran a survey, and there, and only about 42% of the population has a boat in the marina. The other 58%, or 48% is, is not, are not citizens. They're from Austin.
Yeah. You remember way back when, we used to be able to keep people...
Probably a higher percentage now, probably a higher percentage of, of non-citizens that have boats in the marinas. So, I mean, so we're supplementing them too, when you start, when you talk about doing that. So it's not a...
We're not supplementing anything.
No, we're not supplementing.
It's because it pays for itself. And I mean, honestly, I chose to buy my house in Morgan's Point because of the marina. Now, as far as increasing the rates, I think that, you know, a gradual adjustment, that might be more than necessary or needed. But I think the last time rates were increased with the marina, if we're going to dive into there, the significant increase was like something like 46%. I mean, my slip was going to go from like, I think it was $87 at that time, to almost $200 in one, one little, and so everybody freaked out, right? With, with reason, because nothing inflates 50% in one year. That's something that's been delayed for the last couple of years.
But I think it was in the budget, was it not?
It has been every year, to refloat the...
No.
Okay.
They, two years ago, they put money in for a wave break. I, I think that was really for the purpose. And then we were, we knew we needed to do the refloat, but then as priorities shifted. But, I mean, to, to answer this point, you know, the marina water, wastewater, they call it enterprise funds for a reason. You're supposed to run it like a business. And I know that sucks, but I mean, that's really the one thing, is you, you can run the marina. And again, you don't have to go 100% to Franks, but you can't keep rates where you're not adjusting, or at least looking at them every couple of years.
Oh, no. And that's what I'm suggesting.
No, I know. But yeah, so if we have a reason...
I've heard some people at different meetings say, you know, if our rates are so much lower than Franks, we need to raise them. I mean, sure, you can do that. But it, it is a community thing. And, you know, whether we got a boat in there or not is immaterial. It's still...
No, yeah, I mean, and, and I mean...
It's kind of like a park. I mean, if you look at how many people in the community actually use the park.
Yeah. How many of those 5,000 people came to Summerfest? How many of those were residents? And how many of those were from the outside?
I mean, it's just part of the...
But the city funded it, and it's the right thing to do. So I hear you. And, and some people fund golf courses in their city. So, yeah.
Yeah.
We just have to balance.
I think it's, I think it's just keeping up with the times. Like I said, I absolutely would oppose, you know, a 50% increase just to keep up with Franks. I, I think that's wrong. But the thing I do hear from a lot of our folks is, you know, we, we say that it's a community property. It's a community resource.
Resource.
You know, it brings people to the community, you know. That's why I moved here. But we have to keep in mind that there are, I don't know, what, 4,750 people who don't. So, I mean, that's, is that right? I don't know. I don't have a dog in the hunt. I don't have a boat down there. But, you know, we have to keep in mind all the people who don't, because I hear that all the time. Well...
And that's why I think we should be real sensitive.
Yeah.
City funding capital. Now, the city has funded water projects, and the city has funded sewer projects, and those are enterprise funds. I just view the marina a little differently.
Yeah, you got to be careful when you say it's a community asset when the community can't participate because there was a waiting list that's 14 years long.
But that's, that's no fault of, of the people that have been there. I, I was on that list for like four years, Dennis, or three and a half years. Like, and when they called me, I did cartwheels out of my school. And so like, yeah, I mean, it's a horrible thing. And they've looked into making the marina bigger, and that would be awesome if they could, but they can't apparently. And, and so like, you know, our city's grown. It just is, is what it is. But like, outpricing people, because that's ultimately what was brought up the last time this was brought, is, is outpricing people. Oh, well, let's raise the rates, you know. And again, I'm going to, we'll just deflect on this conversation at the present.
Now, I don't want arbitrary rate increases. That's not what I'm suggesting.
I know you're not.
I'm just saying we ought to look at it every year and not have those big draconian 50% increases. And we took a big rate increase on water, oh, Catrice isn't here, but a few years ago. And it's because we had...
And I guess part of it from, from my viewpoint is some of this has to, you have to have increases just because stuff goes up. But some of them, I'll just throw it out. The Marina, if the Marina is making money and there's a little bit of money set aside for whatever the refloat, the dock or whatever it is, you know, that's a huge benefit to the community. And if it's making, if it's breaking even, if it's paying all of its bills, why would I want to jack it up? Because Franks does? I don't give a care what Frank does. That's his problem.
Well, because we, in my opinion, the Marina hasn't had significant capital investments in a while. We're gonna have to, and Ronnie, I think, is going to talk to us in the CIP in the fall about what he wants to do with the Marina. And I think it'd be nice to tell our residents that the Marina is self-funding, that the city isn't funding. Now, if in a case the city has to fund something because it's extraordinary, an emergency or whatever.
But it's never had to do that historically.
No, no.
As a matter of fact, when it was hit by a tornado, the citizens of this town actually rebuilt the Marina. So it's, it's always been that positive.
Right, right. And those rates, just as an example, haven't increased since 2015.
Keep in mind that, and now this is not current, but about eight years ago, we ran a survey. And there, and only about 42% of the population has a boat in the Marina. The other 58%, or 48% is, is not, are not citizens. They're from Austin.
Yeah, you remember way back when, we used to be able to keep people.
Probably a higher percentage now, probably a higher percentage of, of non-citizens that have boats in the marinas. So, I mean, so we're supplementing them too when you start, when you start about doing that.
We're not supplementing anything.
No, we're not supplementing.
It pays for itself. And I mean, honestly, I chose to buy my house in Morgan's Point because of the Marina. Now, as far as increasing the rates, I think that, you know, a gradual adjustment, that might be more than necessary or needed. But I think the last time rates were increased with the Marina, if we're going to dive into there, the significant increase was like something like 46%. I mean, my slip was going to go from like, I think it was $87 at that time, to almost $200 in one, one little. And so everybody freaked out, right? With, with reason, because nothing inflates 50% in one year. That's, that's something that's been delayed for the last couple of years.
But I think it was in the budget, was it not?
It has been every year to refloat the.
Okay.
They, two years ago, they put money in for a wave break. I, I think that was really for the purpose. And then we were, we knew we needed to do the refloat, but then as priorities shifted. But I mean, to, to answer this point, you know, the Marina water, wastewater, they call it enterprise funds for a reason. You're supposed to run it like a business. And I know that sucks, but I mean, that's really the one thing is you, you can run the Marina. And again, you don't have to go 100% to Franks, but you can't keep rates where you're not adjusting, or at least looking at them every couple of years.
Oh, no. And that's what I'm suggesting.
No, no, I know, but yeah, so if.
I've heard some people at different meetings say, you know, if our rates are so much lower than Franks, we need to raise them. I mean, sure, you can do that, but it, it is a community thing. And you know, whether we got a boat in there or not is immaterial. It's still.
No, yeah, I mean, and, and I mean.
It's kind of like a park. I mean, if you look at how many people in the community actually use the park.
Yeah, how many of those 5,000 people came to Summerfest? How many of those were residents? And how many of those were from the outside?
I mean, it's just part of the.
But the city funded it, and it's the right thing to do. So I hear you. And, and some people fund golf courses in their city. So, yeah.
Yeah.
We just have to balance.
I think it's just keeping up with the times. Like you said, I absolutely would oppose, you know, a 50% increase just to keep up with Franks. I, I think that's wrong. But the thing I do hear from a lot of our folks is, you know, we, we say that it's a community property. It's a community resource. You know, it brings people to the community, you know? That's why I moved here. But we have to keep in mind that there are, I don't know, what, 4,750 people who don't. So I mean, that's, i- is that right? I don't know. I don't have a dog in the hunt. I don't have a boat down there. But you know, we have to keep in mind all the people who don't, because I hear that all the time. Well.
And that's why I think we should be real sensitive.
Yeah.
City funding capital. Now, the city has funded water projects. And the city has funded sewer projects. And those are enterprise funds. I just view the Marina a little differently.
Yeah, you got to be careful when you say it's a community asset when the community can't participate because there was a waiting list that's 14 years long.
But that's, that is.
It may be shortened after Ronnie's presentation.
I, I was on that list for like four years, Dennis, or three and a half years. Like, and when they called me, I did cartwheels out of my school. And so like, yeah, I mean, it's a horrible thing. And they've looked into making the Marina bigger, and that would be awesome if they could, but they can't apparently. And, and so like, you know, our city's grown. Just is, is what it is. But like, outpricing people, because that's ultimately what was brought up the last time this was brought, is, is outpricing people. Oh, well, let's raise the rates, you know? And again, I'm gonna, we'll just deflect on this conversation at the.
Now, I don't want arbitrary rate increases. That's not what I'm suggesting.
I know you're not.
I'm just saying we ought to look at it every year and not have those big draconian 50% increases. And we took a big rate increase on water. Oh, Catrice isn't here, but a few years ago. And it's because we hadn't adjusted our water rates for 10 years. So I just don't want to, I want this to be an agenda item. I'd like this to be, so, council considered.
Want some, you know, like only, we would do one, and then we won't do them all.
Yeah, and then Carrie, if you and Dalton can come up with what you think, how you want to present these. I'm, I wouldn't know where to begin on this. So, I mean, I helped with the water rates five or six years ago, so I know that process. But I'm interested in some guidance on that too, so.
Yeah, and I, I think this would be an easy thing to have more of a matrix in the budget.
Yeah, and also what are our needs as a city?
Sounds good.
Okay, so then my next section is my, I guess, nickel and diming? Or what did Dalton call, call it? Whatever. My next section is on looking at some specific expenses that have been budgeted by the departments to try to understand them. So the first one is really a future item. We need to come up with a financial policy, and, and we will do that. Especially once the audits get done, they'll give us some guidance. The auditors will give us guidance on significant financial policies that we need to start implementing. So the first question I had was on page 24. There's an $85,000 engineering costs. And right now, it's unidentified as to how it's going to go. And I'm just asking if we don't have identification for whatever studies we're going to do, that maybe we could put that $85,000 into roads? And then as studies come up that we need to do as a city, that the council approves them on a project-by-project basis? Rather than just having $85,000 of funds earmarked or unidentified projects?
But is that not a good idea in one respect? In that you know you're going to have different studies you want to have done? And you got a pot to drag it out of?
That's, yeah, that's one way to look at it, for sure.
Yeah. I mean, because we, we know that we want, I think we know that we want, or we're probably going to seriously consider going with some sort of a road study, just.
But it hasn't been approved. So do we put unapproved things in the budget? Because we still need to address that as a council.
I don't think you do.
Which, I'm sorry, I got lost on that.
I'm just saying the council has not approved that expenditure.
Which expenditure?
For, for the road, I thought you said roads, the road study.
Saying that we might want to do that, because we've talked about it three or four times. And we might want to spend some money on the, on the study for the roads. But it, it, so instead of trying to drag it out from someplace else, if you've got a fund out there or a pot, that, yeah, a bucket that says, okay, this is for whatever kind of studies you want to have, then you, you would pull it out of there, and then you'd know you've got whatever the math works out to the, the next one, so.
I could go either way on this one, to be perfectly honest. I'm bringing it up, it's $85,000.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we change it to $50,000 and put 15,000. I mean, I know it's nickel and diming, but like, $5,000 towards road, $10,000. Eventually, we can get to where we need to be and get some stuff moving on the roads, you know?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I, I kind of go back to what I said earlier. If it's in there, I, I would just, I would rather not move it. And, and I mean, we all seem to agree that it's going to get used. I kind of liken it to the, you know, the vehicle fund. We got $115,000 set aside for a couple of vehicles. We're not saying they're Fords. We're not saying they're Chevys. They're trucks. Kind of the same thing with this. I mean, I, and it's just for my little pea brain, maybe. I like to see a mark on the wall that says, here's your 85 grand for engineering costs. And then, of course, the bright side is if a year from now, we've only spent 55,000, we, we roll that back over, so I'm, I'm a, I'm a placeholder.
Okay, so does this take council's approval authority away from council? Because we've approved the budget at 85? So the city manager can just spend $85,000 on engineering costs without coming to council for an approval? And, and that's the way the budgets work? And so that's what.
So I'm going to go to RSA, and I'm going to go ahead and get my road study that I want, even though you guys.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
And that was a question mark.
There are thresholds.
Yeah, that was a question mark, not a, a statement by any of you.
And, and he brought it up the other day. A lot of these things, then you would see, I mean, i- if it is 100% defined somewhere in the scope of this budget, you would see it on the October, October council agenda as a consent agenda item. So this would not be one of those things. It's going to be kind of at y'all's direction, knowing that there is money available to spend. So if you want to get a design for one of the parks, you know.
It's not like a gift card saying, here's $85,000, Carrie, go spend it however you want, correct?
Right, but so I mean, I, I think we had some in maintenance, because I know basically Parks and Rec fall under the maintenance kind of framework. So this would give y'all some money, since y'all wanted to have the Parks and Rec committee, to go say, hey, go get some engineering for a design for one of the parks. So it's not saying we're using this vendor and we're going to, you know, put it through and without taking it to y'all, but it's, it's giving money for what y'all have asked us that you think what the community needs.
Thanks for the clarification, Carrie.
Okay, you can move on if you want to. The franchise fees from Waste Management, they actually pay us franchise fees, or they netted against our expenses to pay for Catrice's time of her, the billing, and to pay for use of our roads. And right now, we're netting it against an expense, so we're not showing the franchise tax. It's a minor point. I think we should verify with the auditors. And I think we need to show that we have revenue from Waste Management, because that's a piece of the roads. You know, they're.
Tearing up the roads.
Tearing up the roads.
But they're also keeping them clean, so.
There's a healthcare consultant in there for $12,000.
That's the consultants that I think.
Yeah, that's Bryson.
Yes, so they helped us evaluate whether we should stay with TML or whether we should go with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we've made that decision, so.
Yeah, I think that they were coming back to help education more.
Yeah, I think.
As part of that fee that, that you paid them.
That's well, that's well worth 12,000.
Yeah, and, and I think, just as an aside here, the tele, tele, telehealth, whatever it was, telemedicine lyric. Listening to those, the, the, the two representatives from the company discussing amongst themselves and us what they were doing in their private life with the telemedicine, particularly with the dependent thing. I mean, if you can make a phone call and find out whether or not you need to take your kid in or not, that would be a huge load off your. I know when we were having kids at home, you, you, you didn't take them to the doctor every time, but you know, the one time you decide not to, then they yell at you for, why didn't you bring the kid in last week?
Right.
And then the week after or the next time, it's like, you know, they stub their toe. Why are you bringing them in?
Right, that's a good.
If you do telemedicine, I think that would be a huge benefit to so many people.
We've agreed to that and.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just think it, and those guys, I think, can make that point very clear to the employees.
Sort of HR, the HR part.
We don't have an HR function, really.
Yeah, and I think that was a, the discussion that they had offline, I thought was incredible for the employees that have kids.
Yeah, and they said they would help us with open enrollment. They would help us with the marketing brochures or whatever to help our employees understand the change. We got a handout last time on marketing and communications that was outlining about $45,000. And I was wondering what, how much we've spent on those costs in the past? And are, are all this $45,000 what we want to, want to provide for our community next year? I don't know, remember you guys, it looks like this? I can just continue on with my comments, and then we can come back and address them if you want.
Can I just interrupt? I mean, there, there's really nothing to dive in here. I mean, in my honest opinion, so I mean, really, the, the way they captured these uniforms, you know, whether that's marketing, that's always been in the admin budget. So yes, I mean, we did add some training for her to go to conferences. But so really, the, the couple of big ones are Archive Social and Flash Vote. All the other ones, for the most part, we've had in the, in the past. So just at a high level, we've added $14,000 to this budget. We're capturing it, we're, we're labeling it under the communications umbrella. But really for here, and I, you know, I, I know y'all hear it possibly, but you know, for me, I, I had to go deal with the resident, and he just basically said, prior to Esther getting here, you know, again, probably in a, in a city our size, our communication is non-existent. So for us to be able to interact with residents and stuff like this, this is a first step to really let the residents be heard. So this is one of the things that I'm adamant about. There's really no reason to discuss it. It's just move on, and this would be kind of, I mean, that, that's my.
I appreciate your opinion.
Yeah, just real quick, if I can piggyback on that, you know, there's this, a, a good chunk in here. But welcome to council. I'll go ahead and tell you that just prepare, next year, Summerfest is going to cost more. And that's one of the negative aspects of it being so successful every year, is the cost keeps going up. So right now, you know, it's got about 10 grand bookmarked on there. But yeah, just kind of as the organizer, that's something we're going to need to address.
That's one of the most successful events we do.
The most successful.
Right, and it was 20 years ago, too. I mean, you know, that Fourth of July is just part of Morgan's Point tradition. Okay, then on the next one.
Done if I can. One of the things just FYI for council that we've started looking at, leaning forward in, and I don't remember if we discussed it or not, but Esther can, go ahead, not is, we have the Big Eclipse coming up next year. So just kind of put that one on the back of your head and earmark that for something that we're going to have to discuss. I did a quick check of hotel rooms in the area already. There's a two-star hotel. Yeah, it sounds like it. There's a two, two-star hotel out in Killeen that you can still get rooms at, but you're going to pay $1,008 a night. I kid you not. So this is something that I, as council, moving forward with the budget and stuff, I would like for us to take a good look at. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, what do we need to do? Do we want to look at it now? Do we want to address it?
Um, I, I think it's something that, um, just kind of, you know, the, the hardy guy, we're, we're putting together some thoughts and, and things that we can, we can look at. I think, I think right now is probably not the right time, but definitely we all need to get involved and, and just look at some options for the city. I think it's a good opportunity for us, both financially and, you know.
Yeah, so that's April? So we probably need to get on it November, December? Okay, so we just need to make sure, Camille, maybe that that's on the agenda for October, November, to talk about, what, is it Eclipse? In April of '24? So the next thing is $36,000 for a inter-local agreement with COG. Talked to Carrie today. $24,000 is for P&amp;Z assistance, about $2,000 a month. And $12,000 is for COG to help us with grant assistance. We do need that P&amp;Z workshop to see, align our priorities as a council with P&amp;Z. So this is an opportunity where it might, it's not a fixed contract. It is that we only pay for what we use. So that's the good news. But you know, if they're going off using COG to come up with an ordinance that then we say no to, you know, that's a waste of money. And we all know that. So that's pushing for the P&amp;Z, Camille, and council to get together with, on a workshop to develop some priorities.
Because I actually met with a resident right after we talked. And so they, this resident was having some issues with basically grass going all the way up through their, their neighbor's grass behind their fence, being a, you know, a four-foot chain-linked fence, and the grass was taller than that. And so they were extremely concerned about a wildfire, especially where they live closer to 317. You know, the, the fire, it didn't get too big last year, like on Palomino or whatever it was, or.
I don't think so.
But anyway, but so as we do this, that it's, it's in the ordinance that it can happen. But so if we need to put some more teeth with Jay to start actually enforcing the ordinances, or if the ordinances aren't very good, y'all need to give planning and zoning some direction on what ordinances need to be made more user-friendly for not only staff, but for residents.
Yeah, Carrie and I talked about this today also. Like about four or five years ago, I didn't even know P&amp;Z existed. And so I was just working on the website, and Jay was having some issues with code compliance with our ordinances. And he didn't like some of our ordinances. And so I said, Jay, I have time. I will be glad to help you rewrite these ordinances to present them to council so that we can get compliance. So if that's something that, you know, maybe Jay and P&amp;Z work together, because we, do we need new ordinances? Or do we need to enforce the ordinances that we have? Or if we, if they're so unenforceable by Jay, you know, abandoned cars and stuff, then maybe we need to look at our ordinance and either put some teeth in them or adjust them.
So can I jump in for a little guidance on that with you? Both. Ordinances need to be relooked at in addition to maybe new ones. And then in addition to that, you need to start looking down the line and looking at how the enforcement is going. And all the way from the beginning to the very end, where you're establishing punishments and fines and, and holding people accountable. So that's a, that's a council-driven discussion.
Right on. I'm, I'm all in. How can I help? So that's the $36,000. We have a new, well, we have a city secretary today. We're getting a new person in there, and there's some money for new furniture. And I just asked, do we need to have new furniture for an existing position? And then Carrie told me some really good news, if you want to elaborate.
Yeah, but see, I mean, and I'll try not to tread lightly, but this is the stuff that we don't need to broadcast. But I mean, to me, that, you know, at the end of the day, if we're looking at that, that we had $5,000 of office furniture in the budget, we're missing the bigger picture. So however, I, I will share it since we talked about it. But basically, we got about three full offices worth of furniture donated from Horizon. We just have to go and pick it up. So to keep some.
It's a bank that's closing its office.
It's our bank. Yeah, so the, it's, we are one of their clients. Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, so they're, they're changing their corporate offices in Austin. So the only cost to us would be to probably, the easiest, even though we have a trailer, would probably be to have a, you know, rent a U-Haul down there. That way, it's closed then, even though we're never going to get rain here. But so, anyway, but yeah, so I mean, some of these things, like I said, I know seeing this for the first time, but believe me, we're not asking for $50,000 of furniture. And I, I know you didn't ask this, but this was one of the ones of this way, as we rearrange offices, it's not a new position, but some of the furniture was donated to the city from a previous city manager like 20 years ago. So it's not that it's.
This amount of money is just.
The bare bones.
Getting a couple of things just to align with the new furniture that we're being given. Police uniforms. We have $12,000 in there. It's a 55% increase.
And I think I probably told you that incorrectly.
Okay, good.
Well, no, no, at least the.
Because I went, what?
Switching blue to green. From here going forward, I, I think what we wanted to do was, obviously, we, I think what we did in the other budgets was to put, and it just didn't make the, in here. So it actually would have increased the budget even more. But you know, obviously, we want officers to have a new uniform every year or, and whatever the, the allowance is. So even if we say 10 officers at six, it doesn't matter if they switch from blue to green or, or whatever. From here going forward, we're going to clean up this budget to just say, look, make it look more like a uniform allowance. And then we basically would reimburse them as they.
This is providing our officers a new uniform every year. I mean, is that?
Plus boots.
No, but I mean, is that, you just get one?
Yeah, so essentially, over the history of the years, I'll give you the history of the years. So over the history of the years, we collected uniforms, had overabundance of them. In the beginning, you would buy, in the first of the fiscal year, you'd buy new uniforms, refresh them. And then somewhere along the lines, you know, at the end of the year, like, hey, we got some more money. Let's, you know, black it out, you know? And they would get more new uniforms. And, and then over the years, we've kind of changed to that. And then we've kind of dipped during the Andrew Bill era. We kind of lost the ability to make sure that we kept buying officers the same amount of uniforms every year, which is, in this case, my opinion, is the bare minimum. You can buy more and not still over, achieve the overabundance, but this is the bare minimum. What we brought to budget is the bare minimum, which is.
So this $12,000 is one new uniform for each of the nine or 10?
It's about three, so depending, it's three short-sleeve shirts, three long-sleeve shirts, three pair of pants. And that gets you through their longest period of the week, which is your Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then boots and whatnot. And then, of course, going into, you know.
And then, of course, going into, you know, future budgets that may align a little differently. This year is a refresh on uniform belts and boots. So going into...
Those are the more expensive items, maybe?
Yes, yes, yeah. But then like your shirts and your pants are those, that's the bare minimum and that will be the same going through, you know, to the, to the next year, or we would ask.
Does that end up being like a reimbursement where the officers go to like a uniform store, they buy their things and then...
No, I wish, but then we'd end up looking...
All different.
All different. And so we have standards. So we have standards and I think y'all like having standards. So, so no, but it will be essentially going forward into kind of like an allowance program, but they have to pick from, you know, they have to go to our distributor and say, hey, I want, you know, a long-sleeve shirt or a short-sleeve shirt. Or, hey, I need to buy me a new duty belt or I need some new boots. And then, you know, get that, we're moving to in the allowance scale. This is just our first year to kind of move into it, but the duty belts and the boots outside of that are in this year's budget to do a refresh. We used to do boots for our guys and then somewhere along the lines, my predecessor said, no, we're not. And it's, everybody else does it around the city, so we're trying to get back in line with what that is. And so we, so that's a refresh and then duty belts. We haven't had a new duty belt since Fred Churchill was here, so.
This is kind of a catch-up.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Matt had a little bit of leniency from Ian Dalton with his budget, with how bad of a shape he inherited the department. So that would kind of answer the travel next time, that your next one down to, that knowing that, hey, we want to make sure that we're enabling him to get his officers what they need so they can better do their job and serve the residents.
Yeah.
And we totally support training, 100%.
And so going, going forward, you know, we're getting a better picture, you know, especially with this year with flattening out those lines. So you'll get, council will get a better picture. When I came in, I walked in, I think, the first week as interim chief of police with a $4,000 uniform bill, and I didn't have $4,000 left in my line item. So that does, kind of goes to show you that I'm like, uh, so the uniforms aren't cheap, essentially. But going forward with this, this year, I'm pretty comfortable. I mean, I'm not perfect, so I may have forgotten one or two things, but I'm pretty...
You sold us on that one. We're moving on to travel.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with going in, that things are flat going into this year and you'll be a more realistic picture.
Okay, sounds good. So then the police travel is also five times over the prior years. So that's, we're investing in training and that training involves travel and we reimburse for that. So that's a step up, you know, to a new normal, is what I'm hearing.
And we don't necessarily... Yeah, and essentially, we were down, you know, two employees this fiscal year and now we brought them, so we weren't able to travel and whatnot, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so now going, like I said, now that we're fully staffed, that things are starting to bring back out to flatten, so it's a more realistic picture.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're here tonight because my next couple are...
And we don't reimburse employee, like, we don't reimburse for everything for the travel. I mean, we are going to try to pay the hotel with a city card, but then you would get a per diem if you were going, so that way we're not seeing you charge, you know, whatever on your card. So it's just, the per diem is an easier one, which is one of those financial policies that we need to update.
Yeah, and I love...
RMS is just that, that ticketing citation stuff?
Yeah. RMS is the, all of our records, that's our reporting.
So is this the software to the hardware that, no, that was software before?
This is still on the CapEx sheet, too, basically, when you do it. This one's explained in the CapEx.
This seems like a duplicate.
Oh, it's redundant.
It is.
Okay, okay. And then VAS service?
Yes, so it's, that's just what the manufacturer calls it, is video as a service. So that's our contract that we went into with the previous council for five years for body worn cameras and our in-car cameras. So that's, you know, covers the life of them for five years. We even get new body cameras. I think coming up in this next fiscal year, we'll get new body cameras.
That's in capital, too, then, right?
In the budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the right place for it to actually be, but I mean, it's still an expense to the city, but whether it's, whether we need to not show it as a capital outlay, that's, that's an audit-related question.
Yeah, and then the proverbial question of the FLOC system. And evidently, we've had it funded for the last couple of years because we were in a test mode and now we're stepping up to $12,000. And, you know, I've asked the question before and I know you put it in your monthly reports about, you know, the hits you get on FLOC and how it's important to be involved in the regional. And if we just get one hit that we can follow through on, that's providing safety to our city. And then there's also, it's an optic, people come into our city and they can see that their license plates are being read, if that's any deterrent or all. I think it might be, just like the speed limit signs.
It is, and...
So we're paying that for the first time this year, too, right?
No, so, so we paid 11,000, I just found this out today. So matter of fact, so it was a good topic. So we paid $11,000 in 2021. It would be your, right after October of your 21, 22 budget year. So it was like October 23rd, they paid it. That was the $1,000 implementation fee and then a $10,000 service fee for the cameras and the software. That got us, that is supposed to renew in, no, in September of 2023, sorry, September of 2022. But then we went for a period from that time till April where we didn't have our fourth camera on 2483 installed. It wasn't fully completed because of tech stop and going through them. So we got from basically September of 2022 till April of 2023, free-ish? Well, I mean, we paid. And then so we got hit with our bill and it's basically the same thing. So our bill starts over in April of each year, yeah, April of each year. And it's $10,000, except for the fact that I put in $2,000 extra because if we don't sign a contract with them for a year, two years, five years, whatever, the price will increase for the no-contract fee, you know what I mean? Month-to-month, whatever you want to call it. So, so we have a chance to negotiate, well, we have till November of this year to negotiate going into that contract. So I put in the fee that it would be if we did not have the contract. So if we do, it'd be same $10,000 a year. So I gave it the $12,000 for the no-contract in case council decides, you know, we want to go month-to-month or however you want to place that.
Well, you know, and maybe before that comes up, you can, you know, I'm a stat person, I think Roxanne's a stat person, you know, if you could give us some statistics on it and I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I mean, every, every month, and I think that started with the previous council, right as they were outgoing, I think Mr. Gossitt wanted that information included in there. We really kind of didn't like to publish a lot of it, which is more of an investigative tool. Like I said, the deterrence is there, but we kind of wanted to keep all that, you know, we don't want to give everybody all the tricks that we have, you know? But all those are in there, so, you know, we just culminate all those hits and you can just pick up all the council package. You can see, it's not just hits, it's how the officers, as in this council package that's coming up, you can see how the officers use the system themselves. So instead of just the hits that the system generates, so.
Okay, and then we talked about the library expenses, maybe pulling those and just having a kind of consistent financial policy. If the grant's not awarded yet, we're not going to budget for it. And then the certificate of obligation, that is really a question for the auditors as to how it gets, what fund it gets accounted for. So that's my list.
Just more on the revenue side, just on the interest, on the expense side, I'm pretty sure we're 100% right with the, being in the interest and thinking fund.
Right. So, yeah, so we didn't use the, we entered into the certificate of obligation in July of '21 and it was for the ground storage project, but we didn't start the ground storage project until end of '22?
Yeah, I think the first.
Beginning of '23, anyway.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the first payment was January, February.
So we had invested the money and we actually made more income because interest rates went up than we had to pay out in expense. And that profit, if you will, went into the general fund. And I was thinking that, and just, we need the auditors to sign off on it, but because it relates to the water project, because the certificate of obligation was entered to for an enterprise fund, it should probably be accounted for in the water fund, so general fund should not get that revenue, it should go into the water fund. But we'll get the auditors to sign off on that because that's just me.
But I mean, really, even now, though, we probably spent, depending on how you want to allocate.
One way or the other, it comes in.
Right.
Pardon?
One way or the other, we get the money.
We get the money.
In the interim, we get the money.
But we got to keep the funds separate.
Well, we might have already spent all the $2 million, too.
Oh, we, definitely.
Yeah, so depending on however you want to allocate each payment versus where...
You can go against that first, if you want.
Right. So right now, then in theory, just to make it simple, then, yeah, if we're using the ARPA money or whatever, it might, all the interest could be right. So it's just an accounting question.
Okay, and we're going to be moving on and I'm going to ask everybody, we, I think it's scheduled everything for four o'clock tomorrow, is that still on y'all's agenda?
Four or 4:30?
I'm going to be, probably, we scheduled it for four, I thought, and I was going to be late at 4:30.
I mean, y'all tell me now if y'all don't want to, we can move it to five. We got a council meeting at six, so what do y'all want to do?
It's on the website at four, so we have to meet at four.
Do y'all have a lot of questions? Or if you do, then we need to do it at four. If you don't have...
We might because there's a whole lot with EDC coming up that I was...
Pretty sure.
Yeah, EDC is... But I'm a little confused about it.
Me, too. I'm confused on EDC also.
Yeah, because, well, I think Linda's going to give a presentation.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
But I don't, that's at four o'clock, that may be in the, in the council meeting.
I wonder if we could get her to put that in the workshop.
You don't want to put her before, you don't want to have the discussion before you have her, give her...
No, that's what I'm saying.
Her presentation, really.
Maybe we could move her to the workshop, if she is available.
I don't know what her availability is. I didn't, I didn't do that, so I don't know.
Yeah, we can, we can ask.
If she does, y'all want to do it at four? If she doesn't, y'all want to move it to five?
I don't know that we have that flexibility, it's been posted.
Yeah, so...
Oh, that's right, it has been posted.
It is posted on our, on our city calendar online at four.
That's right.
August 8th, from 4:00 PM to...
It has been posted at four.
Six PM is the council workshop.
I thought we said 4:30, but, yeah.
Carrie, are you going to be here tomorrow?
You can go ahead and finish that workshop early and take a break till six.
That's true. Yeah, there's no timeframe, I think it just said it starts at four.
Yeah.
Honestly, I probably, it'll probably be closer to 4:30 before I can get here.
Okay. Based on that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, can we sum it up? We may be done with the budget, Dennis.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to do that tomorrow, I'm sorry, I...
Oh, no, but I mean, as a group...
Oh, okay. Sum it up.
Did we, and I lost the bubble again, were we today trying to decide what we think we want to do for the rate? And then tomorrow, we were going to go with, with that rate and then approving the budget?
I, I was under the understanding that it had to be posted for 10 days in advance and that's why it was all delayed till the 14th and the 15th.
Okay, correct.
And so our discussion today, we went over the budget and we've all, we've approved the salaries and everything and we've talked about the tax rate and we've kind of unofficially approved the tax rate. So I think the meetings on the 14th and 15th will be short meetings because basically it's, hopefully, well, I won't be here, so.
Carrie, will you have time between now and the council meeting to do a one-page summary on the changes to the budget for us? And then we can approve it at tomorrow's meeting then, which would be Herculean if we could do that.
But are we running up...
It's on the agenda. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but is it, is it within the timeframe of the...
It's a 10-day timeframe because that's why we moved it to the 14th and 15th.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we can approve the budget before the tax rate, right?
No, we have to approve the budget before the tax rate.
Okay, okay, so we can approve the budget then tomorrow night?
I think it's on the agenda.
I'm looking at the agenda for tomorrow, actually.
Okay.
I don't know if we pulled it to then do the, approve the budget next Monday and then...
It's got EDC, it's got the resolution through the EDC, it's got Parks and Rec, it's got more Parks and Rec, it's got grant application for the city engineer.
Our budget scheduling that Dalton gave us a few months ago, it says August 8th, regular council meeting, budget adoption.